I'll call to order the Tuesday, January 24th, 2023 Town Council Committee of the Whole to order at 6:35. All councilors are present with the exception of Councilor Parker, who should be at a TVCCA meeting and should be here shortly. Calendar and Communications, Councilor Baumgartner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, I attended a gathering held by L&amp;M Healthcare workers. They're currently in contract negotiations and the ramifications of those negotiations could very much even have Groton impacts as Pequot Health Center is also located here. Nothing further to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Franco?
Thank you. Had numerous conversations and communications with residents as well as, and I'm probably going to not pronounce this correctly, but an email from Amanda, and it says Amanda Matthews, and she wrote a very nice email to some of the councilors regarding the ARPA deliberations, and it was very pleasantly received by me, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just various emails and communications with residents.
Thank you. Councilman McBride?
Thank you. Just various emails and communications with residents.
Thank you. Councilor Borlon?
Thank you. I received the same email that was stated by Councilor Franco, as well as other communications from residents regarding various issues, you know, regarding the ARPA funding or personal conversations in the community regarding certain decisions and so have you. Also, just want to remind everyone that we'll be holding a Black History Month celebration on February 1st at 3 o'clock at the Town Hall. I did speak to Mark Berry. He has purchased a new banner to go up at Paquonic Plains Park, and I believe, John, how many flags do we have that can go up?
We'll have, it's around four or five, but everything we had up last year, we had them up in quite a few spots around town last year. Lisa, you know, they got a little tattered last year, so Lisa has ordered replacements.
Perfect. So that will be, again, on February 1st at 3 o'clock at the Town Hall. Everyone's invited to attend. I am currently working on some folks to come out and speak. It was kind of last minute towards the end. It was hoping to be absorbed into the DEI or, you know, a committee within the town after, you know, hosting it last year, but to keep the celebration going, I am collaborating with them. I just want to clarify an email that was sent by the Town Manager. It stated in there, and all councilors received it, it said sponsorship. The original graphic that was sent by the Rec Department said, "An event for Town of Groton collaboration with Portia Bordelon." That was because I'm the one doing all the emails and trying to help, you know, get this moving and having a name attached to it. But it was stated that certain councilors, or he had gotten enough message that they didn't want that name on there. It wasn't to grandstand or take anything away from anybody. Everyone's welcome to help. I reached out to people here, they heard me ask. Every councillor up here is willing to be a part of the celebration. If you have something to bring, let me know. My name is just going to be on there with the Town Parks and Town of Groton as a collaboration to, when I'm sending out the email to the folks I'm trying to invite, it's nice when the actual graphic has the name of the person who they're contacting since they were corresponding with me. So I just wanted to clarify the Town Manager's email again. It was not a sponsorship, I was not paying. It was a collaboration, was the image that was sent. And I'm fine with it just saying, "Sponsored by the Town of Groton." So I just wanted to clarify that. If any councillors had any concerns, I think it's a team effort, but at times, sometimes other councillors take initiative to move something forward that's passionate for them, and it was in no way to discredit or take away from any councillor up here. So I just wanted to clear that, and everyone is welcome to participate. And my other communication is, don't forget, the Fitch Music Department is trying to raise money to go to Hawaii. They're going to be having a Beatles concert type thing where they're going to be selling tickets and fundraising. So I, you know, check the Fitch Music Boosters page for more information. Let's see what else I have. I think that is all I have for today. Oh, and a few other communications regarding budget. I did receive a lot of communications from parents regarding Board of Ed budget and making sure that the funds are moved equally into sporting events throughout Groton at the high school. And that's it. Thank you.
Councilor Westerveld?
Thank you very much. I also received a lot of the same communications that everyone else did, including the one from Ms. Lady. Thank you very much. I also got a bunch of emails about the parking in the town. A number of them, I have to say, were in, on the negative about putting paid parking downtown, so that'll come up again at some point. Also, Property Reuse Committee, last week, we met and had a very successful meeting there, and looking forward to moving forward with that. Thank you, everyone.
Councilor Cassieri?
Thank you. Excuse me. Good evening. I received various communications regarding ARPA, Branford Manor, Rabid Raccoon, Mystic Village Apartments, parking meters, the Historic District Commission, a very nice thank you to the councilors who finished the ARPA vote, and an email wishing to look into the usage of the Community Center Theater, which I do happen to have a referral for, so I, as well as a Performing Arts Commission, so I do look forward to when the council will discuss those items. Thank you.
Thank you. Onto the approval of minutes. I make a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes of January 10th, 2023. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Baumgartner. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carers unanimously eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto new business. Ledge Light Health District Operating Agreement can be found on page 10. And I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the operations agreement between Ledge Light Health District and the Town of Groton. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Jones. And we have Steve Mansfield here for some background.
Yeah, I'll just provide a little bit of background on our operations agreements. As I'm sure you're aware, Ledge Light Health District was formed in 1993 when the town of Groton decided for Health District. Since that time, we expanded to 11 municipalities, and although we have other operations agreements and other things, we don't have one with either.
I'm sorry, Town Mayor, can you please just let them know that it's a little echoey? Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not sure what I can do about that. Only one location, I don't have two. Are you okay?
It's better than before, but we'll just have to make do.
Okay. I also ask, and notes I can forward to the council if you want to see this in writing. So to get short, the operations agreements that are in place in our other municipalities are essentially the same. They clarify the responsibilities of both the municipalities and Ledge Light Health District. I've spoken with both the Mayor Hendrick and John Bird, and created operations agreements for both the city and the town that most of we hear, the ones in place with our other municipalities, that I've called them to do a people job for consideration. Have I answered any questions, the council right now?
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Borlon?
Thank you. In light of everything going on in Branford Manor, I'd be remiss not to bring up the welfare and well-being of the residents of Groton when coming into any form of agreement with any health districts. I appreciate all the work that you do, but in here, where's the protections for residents that file complaints? You know, I did some reading, and I know there's no statute as of yet, but it looks like state legislature is starting to look at ways to enact legislation to help folks with mold, and I hope that goes and extends to homeowners when purchasing homes, because it is a public health concern. But with that, I do think, from what I've read, Ledge Light can kind of write their own bylaws or charter, so to speak, and I just couldn't help but to think that there could be more help given to the folks of Branford Manor. And in future, there could be another development as that, as people are willing to speak up about that, more apartment buildings and more folks are feeling comfortable coming out and complaining about their deplorable conditions. And so I just hope that somewhere in here, there's strong enough protections that are going to protect them. From what I've read, from all the bylaws that you guys have and everything for Ledge Light Health District, it states in there that you guys kind of enact and create your own rules. So is there a chance that you're going to be rewriting any of these? Maybe kind of a way in light of the changes and ever-evolving of, you know, the needs of the community? But as a community speaker and a person who's been down at ground zero, seeing the deplorable conditions, I just want to make sure before I vote on something that the protections of every resident in the Town of Groton is protected in this document, especially mold and the conditions when no one else is acting and speaking on their behalf. So if you could speak to that, where in this, or have you made any additions to support the residents of Branford Manor? Thank you.
So this operations agreement, that's not the purpose of this operations agreement. Connecticut, for the Connecticut Public Health Code, Section 198206, says very clearly, "The director of health must call upon any complaints, any environmental complaints in place of any nature." So that's where our guidance comes from. It doesn't have to be operations with our municipalities about what our responsibilities are. Basically delineates what our responsibilities are in Groton's responsibility. Our authority and our direction comes from the Connecticut General Statutes.
So, you know, in reading this, I mean, it's an agreement that what you're saying, you know, whereas Groton accepts and appoints, you know, this and general understands that, there's nothing in here protecting the folks of Branford Manor, maybe in a better capacity since we've learned so much from that experience? Because we're binding an agreement with you to protect our residents.
Sorry, I didn't hear your question.
We're binding in an agreement with you to protect our residents and oversee that, and folks were very concerned about the conditions and the time. City had complaints dating back to 2016 with Mayor, as you stated, Keith Hendrick, in the city of Groton, where there was deplorable mold conditions, and at one point, the building inspector there even states in an email that he thinks that, you know, we should probably get the higher-ups involved in this. So I'm just making sure the protections are in place, and maybe we should add some other protections in this document. Do you have any response to that?
I'm sorry, again, I didn't hear your question. I heard you.
Sure, I'll say it again if you'd like.
Councilor?
You'd like me to say it again?
No, I just said, if the council and the Town Manager want to revise this operations agreement or make some adjustments for language, we're happy to understand.
You would like me to clarify my question, is what you're stating? I'm just making sure I'm hearing you, it's hard to hear you.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Sure, my question is, in this document that we're agreeing upon, for the Town of Groton to go in an agreement with you, what protections are in here to make sure the residents of Branford Manor, because they've been complaining since about 2016 to the mayor and the city, Keith Hendrick, and directing it towards you and the former building inspector? And so to bind agreement with you, where are those protections going to be to ensure the safety and welfare and well-being of our most vulnerable residents?
Okay, so if you go to 1888, page seven.
I'm sorry?
Page seven.
If you go to 1888, page seven.
Yep.
Local Public Health Services, and then 198207A, basic health program, it talks about all the different things we're responsible for, because of health, so that's where it's identified.
Okay, so looking at that, I feel it's not strong enough, in my opinion, based on what we've experienced here in Groton. People were pleading for help, and they were underserved, in my opinion, after reading all the documents that people had complained.
Councilor's time has expired.
I would like, I just yield for another couple seconds, since I had to restate myself several times because of communication issues.
Your time has expired.
May I have an additional five seconds, if you can get a consensus from the council, please?
Mr. Mansfield, do you have an answer to her question?
I think the last question was, where does it say in this document, what our responsibilities are in effect to the citizens of Town of Groton? So again, it's in 198207A specifically, number six, enforcing laws and regulations that affect the health and safety of the public, and those are delineating Connecticut General Statute.
Thank you. Councilor Cassieri?
Thank you. Mr. Mansfield, does this document or this agreement differ from any of the other municipalities that you serve?
Not substantially. There are some minor differences. Some of them are older before my tenure as director, but since I became director about eight years ago, they're essentially identical. There are some differences regarding parking allowances. We did have statuaries, and some in our municipalities still have those operating agreements, but it's a technical issue.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Borlon?
Thanks, I'll take my other turn. Under that section on page seven, the one through 10, there could be a line added there where some other supports could be created. As it was stated, questioned by Councilor Cassieri, you know, it differs for different towns. Do you think there's another way that we could add some more support to make sure in the event of a crisis, that there's protection in place?
So it's important for everyone to recognize, because we are a regional health authority, our services for most municipalities are essentially the same, so we couldn't, for instance, as an example, we couldn't support a Groton ordinance that required covers on every patch in every residential pad. We couldn't be at home, put it down in Groton, we would have to do it for every municipality , because we have to be across the board. Yet, the Town of Groton has something specific they wanted to add to this, we couldn't go under 198207A because that's Connecticut General Statute. These are essential services that are identified as base actions, so we wouldn't have the authority to do that if the Town wanted to add something specific. Someone else can bring, as I said, we'd have to.
Okay, so my question is to the Town Manager, in the agreement that we signed with the city of Groton, and since our building inspector has no jurisdiction, but we are up to hold to make sure the standard that we signed on a while back, is there any protections or separate agreements that you feel should be written up to make sure we are protecting our side on the town?
Well, on these type of operating agreements, I don't, I think it's a little different, because they have to stay flexible to stay within the law, and...
He stated that we could write our own thing separate if we needed to.
I'd want to look further into it, but in terms of this agreement, I think it's a good agreement, same as everybody else signed.
So is this something, then, we can bring back to the table to type up, Town Manager?
I'd have to, I'm not sure what to type up.
So like the ability to require, for example, I've seen in other states, the ability to, you know, where the molding is on the wall, you know, you can have the maintenance pull that off, and so they can inspect behind that for moisture and wetness. Currently, under the way it is when Ledge Light Health comes out, they're able to look at the walls, if they don't see mold, then there's not much they can do. That does not protect a resident if it's growing behind the walls.
I don't agree with your...
In this case, people are getting their apartments painted, and no one's able to see, and then what happens is after a resident lives there for an extended period of time, the mold starts to surface. So this would, you know, we could set up something where Ledge Light, you know, could require the maintenance people to pop off the flashing, like I would do in my own home, and have somebody inspect. If you had a true mold inspection that you paid for out in town, they actually do drill a hole in the wall, send camera and lights in to look around, and then that wall is then patched later. That's for severe cases of mold. Someone down, I know, on Jupiter Point had to have that done after Hurricane Sandy. So visual mold tests, obviously in the case of Branford Manor, are not enough, and so that concerns me for the safety and welfare of our community. So if you're saying it cannot be put in this document, how do we get something together that can give us a stronger response, so that we're not having to change our whole legislation, which I think is great, but we should have some ability to protect our residents within our own governing, you know, principles?
Well, first of all, we'd have to get our attorneys involved, but to me, that's something the health board should consider if they wanted to, you know, I think rules should apply throughout all of the member communities, so probably something you should make a request to their board.
All right. I mean, I can, we can agree to disagree. I don't feel that just because the other towns aren't doing it, there's a lot of things in history that weren't done, and one person spoke up, and it was right. We could be the forerunner if we chose to, and we could write up something to give us the ability to have a much more intensive inspection than the process we have. And it's very simple, popping off a flashing, small hole that's put in by the maintenance, and allow the Ledge Light Health District to swab the inside or look inside the wall for molding.
I think, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure the law will allow that for us. We'd have to look, I really am not sure we have jurisdiction due to that level of rule.
Right. Well, I've exhausted all my things for speaking up on this, on behalf of that, but I would hope that maybe with the new legislation, that will hear the right side of things, where there won't be a choice, it'll have to be part of this document, so, thank you.
Councilor Westerveld?
Yes, thank you very much. On page three, section four, excuse me, Article Four, Section D, it discusses the Groton Town Attorney and/or other council to represent the district in Groton matters. Is that something that's standard through all of the municipalities that you work with?
You're muted.
Yes, that is standard language. Again, I'll give you specific sections so I can look at it on page number...
Article Four, Section D.
Is there a page number on that?
Page three.
Page three.
Having not done this before, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, and that...
Okay, see, sorry, Ledge Light, yes, that language is specific. I don't have every, all 100, 100, it is standard language, basically says that we're not responsible from a legal perspective for Groton's in action prior to joining an municipal district. That's basically what I'm, let's come up to you guys in my tenure, where we've accepted a municipality into the district, and there's ongoing legal action regarding land dispossessed. Basically, there are terms, municipalities are possible for everything associated with that particular activity, and along those same lines, everything that happened after municipality, Ledge Light, yes, that is...
I know there was a lot said there, and I don't think anybody could really hear what you were saying. Is there some way you could provide us an answer in writing with what you just stated?
Sure. If you'd like, I can call on my phone real quick.
Sure.
I think the audio would, I think, yes, be better, I don't know if we play down my zoom from this location I'm at. You just give me one second, I'll call back in.
That's fine for me, thank you.
I just have a clarifying question for the Town Manager.
What's your clarifying question?
Yes, Town Manager Bird, is it my understanding that Ledge Light is our only company that we can kind of go in agreement with? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Right, so it's kind of, there's really no other option.
Okay.
Steve Mansfield's on the call. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks, apologize for that. I'm going to make sure I close out of the other one, so there's no cross-talk, so to speak. So to answer the last question, yes, Section D there, Groton shall provide the Groton Attorney, that language is the same or very, very similar in our other operations agreements, that essentially says that anything that occurred on the Town of Groton's watch, i.e. before Ledge Light Health District became the Health Department for the Town of Groton, is a responsibility of Groton. Anything that happened after Groton joined Ledge Light Health District is a responsibility of Ledge Light Health District from a legal perspective, and there is history there, or precedent, I should say. We have had a number of towns join the district where there's been ongoing litigation or legal actions between, say, a developer and the municipality, and that municipality has remained responsible for all the activities surrounding that pre-existing action. So yes, that language is the same or very similar.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carers unanimously eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto the RTM reapportionment, can be found on page 20. Make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the new representative town meeting membership reapportionment effective for the Town of Groton November 7th, 2023 municipal election. So moved.
Second, Jones.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Jones. And we have Clark McCauser here for some background.
So everyone knows by now, since you're well into your term of office, that the charter prescribes certain, dictates certain moves and measures, one of them being the reapportionment of the RTM after specific functions, such as changing your voting districts, or in this case, it was the census that prompted changing voting districts for the State Representative House 40 and 41. So the memo that I sent at the end of December outlines exactly how you computate the voting districts for, to come up with no more than 45 representatives for the town meeting. And so you can see the divisions that are done and the calculation, and such, as we have seven voting districts, it'll distribute to be 45 members. So if there is any questions, it's pretty clear. There's always a question about, how come when I do the calculation, there's, you know, remainders in my numbers? Well, the statute, or not statute, it's a town charter that dictates how we calculate, and we cannot pay attention to any of the remainders of our calculations. So if it's 7.4, you can't round down or round up, it just stays at 7.9, you can't count on that, which always bothers people, and it bothers me too, but we'd end up with more than 45 members most likely.
Thank you.
Right.
Councilor Borlon?
Yes, I know on Election Day, there was a, I know Representative Connolly, state rep, identified a whole bunch of areas that were not properly identified at the time. Is that being accounted for since that error was found?
Oh, yes, that was counted, that was actually before Election Day. What she identified was before Election Day.
Right, but it was still a bit of a disturbance in the force of people finding where they need to go.
Yeah, it doesn't have anything to do with this reapportionment, you know, it's perfectly in line...
I just want to finish my statement, then you can respond to me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Is that, my concern is, I just want to make sure that, I was asking to make sure the numbers were correct, because originally, when this line was drawn, a whole section and roads were eliminated and not counted, and so it would affect these numbers in the sense of those actual voters, say, in District Four, I just want to make sure they're being, you know, they're being captured, is all. That was my, my hope. And could you just, just double verify where... And could you just, just double verify where, so this would be moving from 42 to 45?
It's actually, we have 41 members currently. Forty-one members. We have two vacancies, but we have 41 members. And it would go to 45. We're not allowed to have more than 45. The way the calculation is set up, and you can't get to more than 45.
Okay. Did anyone look at this map in detail? Some folks have reached out to me with concern for District Four being 10 versus like, you know, making, I mean, that district at 49, 4,913, almost doubles some of the other districts. And has there been any thought to shave that around to evenly, you know, appropriate? It just seems, when you look at an outlier, you see 6, 6, 5, 10, 6, 7, 5. You average those out, you get an average of about 6, and then you have this random number of 10.
Yep, you're, you're identifying something that is well beyond my jurisdiction. We don't, my office does not calculate, you know, I don't set boundaries for voting districts. That's the town council's job or the state legislature's job. We just, I know what you're concerned with, that was dealt with before the election last November, and these numbers are correct. As of election day, I use the election day numbers because I can't, you know, if you keep checking every day, you're going to get different numbers. You know, 23 people move out or 16 people move in. It changes the voter registration all the time. So you gotta pick a date and I designate election, the election date. So I mean, we could have done it last, you know, but we didn't. It took forever to get this correct and I'm glad we, we have it correct, but it is correct. It was correct before the election. No one, no one which the wrong voting district, thank goodness.
So my question is, if we don't vote this in, then what? If we want to send it back and, and question District Four?
You, you, there's no question for, for the numbers that I have here. If the town council, you should adopt this. My recommendation is for you to adopt this. And if you want to discuss making voting districts different, you know, setting them up different, you can't, you can't go against what these, the state house lines are, but you, you could, you could, you could make less districts. You could say, we're going to have four districts or have nine districts. If you want to discuss that, that's a different issue all together.
Okay, so there's no, no jurisdiction for the town council to kind of revisit this and shave off a piece of four and maybe move it into, say, three or one or two?
You can, you could do that, but not this, I'm asking you to approve this now and then you can do something later if you want to.
And how, I'm just asking how that would look, how, how would one go about that?
The whole, that's a, that's a referral that you would do, whole different measure than this.
So we'd need to do a referral and then create a change?
Just for discussion, I mean, I, it's, it may not be, you know, there may not even be anything for you to do that would be all around good. You know, you have to, I don't want to discuss what could happen or couldn't happen. What I want to discuss is the calculation that's here now, which is in line with what we're prescribed to do. And if you approve this tonight and the council approves it, then you can, you know, discuss if you want to have a different line set up for your voting districts. We used to have nine districts. We have seven now. We went from eight to nine and nine to eight, eight to seven. So, you know, it's not unusual to change things. But it does, you know, it does create a whole different set of circumstances when you have more voting districts.
All right, thank you for that clarification. I was just asking to seek information and understanding, obviously not changing anything from the state, but seeing what in the town's control of the council, if we wanted to pull some of District Four into three or two or one, to make those numbers a little bit more round, you know, but if there's, you know, that, that's a whole nother thing and I appreciate your clarification on that. Thank you.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few questions. I was comparing the RTM apportionment from two years ago and it looks like for each district. So in District One, it would be a net loss of one seat. District Two, a net gain of two seats. District Three, a net loss of one seat. District Four, a net gain of two seats. District Five, a net gain of one seat. District Six, a net gain of one seat. And then for District Seven, no change. As far as the voter registration numbers you use, what would be the most recent list you would pull to determine, to determine the apportionment?
I used the election day registration, which is what I'm required to use to determine the numbers.
So it would be as of November, November 4?
We had 21,996 registered voters the week before election day.
Okay.
That's, that's the list that I'm, I'm given by the registrar. But I will correct you on your distribution on the RTM because it's, we, you know, it is a change, but it, you know, you're not going to, you're not, you know, you're going from 41 to 45 members. That's a big change. That's four more people. And they're all coming from several, not just one, but of course you can see that District Four is, it's, it has been bigger than everybody for quite a while. When we, when we switched from having eight districts, we distributed District Five into, into six and four. It was kind of strange. And then made District Six, District Five, you know, we got rid of District One District. So that's when it became so big.
Yes. Yes, no, absolutely. That, that's another thing I observed with District Four, one of the few districts, I think, just looking at previous maps, even when there were, there was nine voting districts. District Four has kind of geographically stayed largely the same and has added areas in large part from District One this past redistricting cycle. So it's, it's going to be a big one. And so I know even now, one of the vacancies are in District Four, at least one of the vacancies are in District Four, I believe, for the RTM. And I know in historically speaking, you know, obviously in that it does host the subbase, a little bit more of a transient community. You know, one of those interesting situations where even though there, there is a lot of population up there, it, you know, it doesn't really matter as far as how the apportionment works for here because it's based on electors, not residents. But nonetheless, still 10, 10 is a very big number. And so just, you know, I, I know that also factoring in minority representation, sometimes, more often than not, in certain districts, there is often minority representation. Republicans are elected by virtue of the minority representation clause. And so in, in the future, do you expect any issue should either party, you know, if there were to gain, say, at least seven seats, would have difficulty actually fielding folks to serve on, on our elected body from that portion of town?
Well, I don't know if you really want my opinion, but, you know, it's always, the minority representation is, is a clause in state statute and the virtue that we have a, there's no representation clause for your town council or your city council is because of Bill Seibis, when he was in the state legislature, he wrote legislation, it's, it's in, in, and that, that happens to, you know, historically, if you want to look at history, it was 35 years that the Republicans had town council. And if there had been represented, you know, minority representation, you would have had more than one or two of the opposing party on. When you only have one, it's not very easy to get a second to your motion, you see? So as far as what candidates are found, more people understand the, the virtue and, and need, the virtue of serving, which is, it's really a remarkable feeling. I've been on the RTM, had served six, six terms. It, you know, it's, it's a matter of, people have to understand that we, our whole town is run by volunteers, not just our government. Our whole town is run by volunteers. So we need people that have a little bit of time. You know, it's, the RTM is one meeting a month maybe, but at least, you can at least count on six meetings a year and maybe a few committee meetings. So, you know, it is a little time out of your life, but it's certainly worth it. So you have to top it up. It's a, it's a, it's a great, it's a great body to be, to serve on. It's the most powerful body on the town, in the town.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Counselor Franco?
Did you, so, did you say that the lines would have to still be there for like the state line where it's developed to the black line that goes across, but for the state representatives?
Yes.
That you cannot mix the top and bottom, basically for the RTM?
Right. And you can't, you can't mess up the city line either.
Right. So if you, if we potentially, the boundaries north of the, that black line, maybe possibly between District Five and Four, if there was a potential to put another district in there, how would that affect voting? We would have to have another polling place, is that correct?
Yes. If we go back to eight districts, you would, you would reverse what, what was done, what was it, six years ago? Was that when we changed it? Seven, eight years ago? Eight years ago? Time flies when you're having fun. Yes, if you go back to having eight districts, that's, that's entirely how it was, District, well, yeah, you could distribute, you could distribute it a little better than it was originally because District Five was tiny. District Six, which is now District Five? No, the other way around. How did it go? Well, I don't have the evidence.
But either way, it was basically between District Four and Five is, is the situation. And, and while I, I will be voting for this tonight, I would have no issue with this becoming a referral and coming to our council for discussion. Thank you.
Counselor Bordelon?
Be happy, I would be happy to write up a memo with suggestions.
So yeah, to Counselor Franco's point, what I'm looking at is the, obviously we can't move that dark line and we can't move the dotted line which separates three from four, which creates two that runs down the middle here of one. But maybe there's a way by moving, I don't know, several neighborhoods into five and it could lower the number for District Four and increase a little bit for Five, maybe to kind of level the, the field a little bit. I guess what's, what, what the most shocking to me is the fact that we have over 40-something thousand people that live in the town of Groton and yet only 21,996 are registered to vote. And if that doesn't speak volumes, I don't know what does. So only fif, barely 50% of our population. But as a volunteer municipal, I'm sorry, can I just finish?
Yeah, that's.
You can, let me, can I just finish and then you can add after? If, if this is the number that's registered, you know, the concern is, is that we represent even the non-registered voters if they have a concern or complaint or a need or they're working on their immigration status or maybe they've had a felony in the past and are working to get their voting rights back. They deserve to still be represented in the town and we're doing that. So I, I hope to see this number come up and, because unfortunately, some of the areas where they're the most underserved, they're the most underrepresented as well. And this, this number kind of bothers me. And so my hope is that the town, not from a Democrat or a public standpoint, but from a town standpoint, we maybe talk to the registered voters and start holding some more voter registration events and ways of working to help people gain voting rights back as well as checking on things to make sure people understand. And that's why I'm really big for the dual language. But my question is, I know from election time and going through the voting list and knocking doors with, you know, fellow counselors, it, it's to my understanding that sometimes people fall off from being inactive, is that correct? And how, how long does it take for someone to fall off of this list?
Again, I don't, I don't, that's not my job, so.
Well, I'm just asking because of the numbers you gave, it's a 21,996. So I just want to make sure we're not missing of anybody.
That number is based on eligible voters. And when you, when you compare the population, that's not all eligible voters. Those were children and everything else mixed in there. So that's not an accurate number for unregistered.
Yeah, I'm just speaking around numbers.
I know, I know, but it, it isn't, I think we have a fairly, fairly good, I think it's pretty representative, but, you know, more would always be better. For, for voter registration, there's a whole process and I, I can certainly provide that booklet to all counselors so they can have all that information. It's, it, and there's a whole line that they have to go through, registered mail to the home. So they have a canvas that they do and it's not the entire town every year. It's, it's random and they don't pick it. It's, it's the, the computer system that picks it. And, and the information, it's postcard, it's sent to a voter. And if the voter doesn't respond, it's either a letter or postcard, I can say again, I don't know. But if the voter doesn't respond, then they have to try again. And then they still don't respond, they have to try again. I think there's four, four tries before. So it could be four years of trying before they actually, so first ping, they don't get any, the next year they'd send it again and the next year they'd send it again and then, you know, after the fourth year, then they become inactive. But in an inactive voter, they're actually counted in this list by this, it's not just active, this is inactive too, because an inactive voter becomes active by virtue of going to the voting poll, by signing a petition, by, by applying for an application, you automatically become active again. So it's not, it's not a horrible sentence if you're inactive.
Okay, so that's, this number includes the inactive then?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Because they could become active any minute.
All right. Well, thank you for your information.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, Counselor Parker has joined us. It's 7:22. Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Onto Complete Streets Advisory Committee, can be found on page 22.
Mayor, before there's a motion, could I say something?
Sure.
If you recall, when we, when the council last took this up, there was a motion on the table, there was an interest in more information and so there was no motion to postpone done. So I'm thinking that that motion essentially died and you should probably start with whatever motion you want, probably the recommended amended motion, which would really just be a motion. But that's just my, I'm thinking on that.
Okay, so there's no motion on the, on the floor?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution to have five ex officio non-voting members, these members being the town manager or their designee, the public works director or their designee, the police chief or their designee, the Parks and Recreation Director or their designee, and planning and development director or their designee, and five at-large voting members, three general at-large members, one representative of Ledgely Light Health District and one member representing a bicycle and pedestrian advisory organization. Initial member appointments would be staggered with one and two-year appointments, followed by two-year appointments thereafter with terms ended on December 31st. So moved.
Second, Bordelon?
Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Bordelon. Any discussion?
I just wanted to add that I did reach out to task force members as requested by the council. Almost all of them responded. Everyone who responded was in the positive that they agreed with this. No one said anything negative.
Thank you. Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes, I would note that the amended motion does include some of the feedback provided at our previous council meeting from counselors regarding the issue of terms. It was mentioned by a counselor, I can't recall who, that they preferred having staggered terms as opposed to everybody being reappointed all at once, once their term expired after two years. And so that, this motion addresses those, those issues by dividing the, the appointment dates and into two pots. So year one, first year, they would be one-year terms and then, or for the members, half of them would be one-year terms, the other half would be two-year, two-year terms. As far as the other issue, there was As far as the other issue, there was, I believe, a comment made by a council regarding one of the voting members being part of, or having the prerequisite of, of public health experience. And so that was largely done to allow for a membership representation from Legislite Health District who participated in the Complete Streets Advisory Committee. So this would just reserve a place for them as this is part of their, their mission, their plan. As Counsel Bordalon mentioned earlier, you know, the desire to have Legislite involved in things just outside of their, you know, regular set of duties. And this is an example of an area where they've participated on their own. Obviously, it does align with their mission, promoting public health, promoting mobility, you know, allowing folks to get, supporting people getting around their community by utilizing bicycles, which is obviously good for physical health as well. So they've been active participants, in particular, Cindy Berry, who is also a Groton resident, who would like to continue serving, who is a representative of Legislite Health District to that commission. And lastly, there is still a member representing Bicycle and Pedestrian Advocacy Organization. So that would be in effect by Groton, or quite frankly, quite frankly, other bicycle or pedestrian organizations that could hypothetically exist in Groton as well. So, you know, this has been a work in progress. Obviously, this council already approved our Complete Streets Advisory Committee and the language, enabling a language for, for the group. So all that this body needs to do is formally establish the provisions of, you know, the membership. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Bordalon?
Thank you. No, I think that's nicely done. It's unfortunate that we had to come back to the table on it. I thought, you know, it was more ready to move at the other meeting. And, you know, I applaud Counselor Baumgartner on his due diligence and patience to try to get this forward. With that, I know that we hired a resilience and sustainability person. And I think with the public health and the streets and accessibility, it might be interesting to possibly add them on to this. I just want to speak through you, Mayor, through the, to Counselor Baumgartner, of his thoughts of adding the resiliency and sustainability folk that we hired to be part of this.
Well, I can answer this question. The, the town manager specifically wanted anyone, he, any staff members to be his designees, so not to.
Just, just to add on, there is already a public works spot, so where appropriate, Greg can have the resilience, or, sorry, there's not a planning, is there? Be planning.
We want Greg.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. I'm giving Greg everything. But, um, but, you know, we'll, we'll bring whatever staff we need to generally for whatever the issue is. And, and part of, part of our in-house process now is pretty much any project has to go through her anyhow.
Okay. Okay, and is, is, and she's noted, that that portion, person is noted in the document itself? I mean, I just want to make sure that we're, you know, again, in twenty years, when someone looks at this long after, maybe none of us are up here or on here, you know, it might not be the same Public Works Director, or counselors, or anybody. That they understand that that was the intention. So we assume a lot when we put that, right? We'll have to go back and find this tape that states that. But under a different complete person running this, someone could say, "The public works," and they may never bring the resiliency person. So sometimes we imply a lot, but as I've gone back and read old notes from old meetings, it's left up to interpretation. So I would just like to see the language in there stating that a member, we, we hired a member for resiliency and sustainability. I think it would just be nice to add that on there.
Well, if we did it, it would be planning, it'd be the planning director's appointment with authorization for me. So you put the planning department.
I'm sorry, she's with the what?
Plan, uh, the planning department. You would put them down as another member of the planning department.
Or you could put, you could put the resilience sustainability coordinator from planning, the planning department, period.
Well, well, we're not going to get into individual, theoretically, I have to appoint everybody. It's, even with the way it reads this way, I'd really keep it the planning department, because they might, you know, there might be circumstances that it's someone else appropriate.
So you're saying it would be the planning department?
Yes, because she's under that. It would be just like we have the public works on there, et cetera. So let me see, what do we have on there now?
I, I, I mean, I don't think we need everyone from planning department. I think if it stated resilience sustainability from the planning department, if they had to have the work.
Oh, it's already in there. Planning and Development Director in terms of their designee. And I don't think we want more than one from a department at one time. So I, again, the council can't call out an individual as staff to me. It has to be my decision. So it would, the planning department would cover that.
If you feel that it does, I, I just wanted it on the record, and no one was asking you to, you know, make, you know, enforce a decision. It's just a mere suggestion from the council to you directly, which we have the privilege to do, and ask you to consider, you know, thinking and making sure that that resilience and sustainability person is there when looking at Complete Streets, because we're looking at flood zones and areas and, you know, just making sure we're, you know, using all the tools we have, you know, before us, you know, since we just hired this person. That, that was my mere ask.
I certainly, I certainly agree, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
And I'm sure John will have, Director Reiner will have her at the meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Gassiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Burt, there appear to be conversations going back and forth in email as recent as last week. Are there any more communication from the members of this task force more recent than that?
No, though, some of them just sent their, I believe, their replies to just me. I heard back from almost everybody, and they were all positive. But nothing, I haven't received anything new since before this packet came out, probably early last week.
Okay, thank you. And just to clarify, I think one of the reasons I wanted this looked at again is to make sure that members of this task force had a say in who ended up in this committee as they did all the work on it. There did appear to be some opposition to the Legislite Health District representation. Was it the majority position to have that representation, Mr. Burt?
Yes, by far.
Okay, thank you.
Point of information?
What's your point of information?
I just wanted, just to clarify, what emails we're referring to. I, I might have missed one or something as to what conversation was going on about this, and what opposition from Legislite Health District. Where was that coming from? I'm not sure.
I had sent an email, I believe, all counselors were copied on it. I sent an email to the task force members asking, running by this, running the motion by them, and then it got altered to, at the request of Legislite to, to have them have a spot, because they actually get grant dollars to work on, on Complete Streets. They, they, that's part of their actual function right now, is to do that. One person, I, only one person said anything about it. I wouldn't say it was against. I, I think they were just kicking around ideas and maybe, I, I forget exactly what it was. I believe that was off the, was that, I'm trying to think, was that, is Frank Bone on the, I think it was one of the resilience committee members, if I remember correctly. But I would not characterize it as against.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to clarify. Could you resend that email when you find it? Just so I can refresh my memory on that. Seems like a while ago. Maybe I, I have it, or if you have a date, I can find it.
Yeah, I'll say, I'll resend it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously, nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. All right, onto a Groton Long Point Bridge DMS program, can be found on page thirty. I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution to use the Design Managed by State program for the Groton Long Point Bridge project, and to authorize Town Manager John Burt to act on behalf of the town of Groton, including executed any and all documents, and to perform all acts deemed necessary to carry out the terms of the program. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Bordalon. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Greg Hammer for Public Works. It seems like it was too long ago we were here to talk about this bridge protection back in July. We've been working on this for a way long time, and it's always been anticipated, but usually I would call it traditional federal local bridge programs, because the federal government pays eighty percent of the cost to the town. The municipal funds pay twenty percent. This current project is estimated at eight point four million dollars. So that means that the town would be responsible for twenty percent of that, or one point six eight million. Recently, we were made aware by DOT that there's a new program, new federal local bridge program called Design Managed by State, DMS, where the project is paid one hundred percent by federal and state funds. Federal's eighty percent, and state bond money pays the other twenty percent. So in other words, no local money is used for this project at all. So the state and feds would pay eight point four million dollars to complete the project. Under this program, the state uses one of their on-call engineers for the design work. They would carry through the design, through permitting. They have a whole rights-of-way section, would do all the rights-of-way acquisitions that are needed. And then they would be, you know, managing the construction during, you know, the contractor during construction. The town will still be involved in the input process throughout the design, throughout construction. There'll still be a public input component to this, under this program. And, you know, so we, we applied for it. This bridge was accepted recently back in December. So now we have the agreements, and they're being currently reviewed by the town attorney. And then, so we're, you know, asking for concurrents, so we can go ahead with this program, and then Town Manager can sign the documents. You know, I know we've done a lot of work in the past on this. There's been task force that have looked at this. I mean, some of you have been on that task force. All that information will be given to the state's engineer. They are well aware of all the issues out here. We'll be having meetings with them. They'll take that information. All the previous public input sessions we've had, I think we've had three or four of them, that'll all be given to the new engineer, so that they'll have that as they go through the design. And again, there will be some public input, you know, going forward as well, under this program. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel Bordalon?
I just first want to thank you, as someone who's served on the task force for a little while. And I know it was like back and forth, like really trying to piece together how to make this bridge, you know, you know, fit the tapestry of the area. And, and there's a lot that goes into this when it was looking at the slope, because we want to look at the sea, you know, level rising, because you don't want to build a bridge that's going to be washed out, you know, in a short time. That's a waste of money. But looking at it, because with the curve and going up and the houses on the side, so there was so much work. And was actually really interested, I remember at the beginning there, Bruce Jones was asking me, "What meeting are you going into?" And I said, "Oh, GLP Bridge." And he says, "Ooh, where's that link?" I said, "Let me send it." So, and he after, had stated how, you know, he thought it was a very productive meeting and very interesting. So there's a lot of work that goes into this. With that, there's a large amount of money, and the fact that we were able to find something that's going to take our liability pretty much down to, you're saying all of it would be covered under this possible?
Correct, yeah.
That, that's, that's, that's amazing. So looking at these numbers and the starting point of a bridge that is, was rated as a priority of our council back when I first got on to handle, I think is extremely important, and I'm excited to see where it goes. My hope, though, is that it's inclusive. My other question is, the three designs that were presented, you know, originally, how would those graphics and designs kind of move with this new project, with the, with the state taking over? You know, would those thoughts be considered, or would it be back to the drawing board again and more talk? Or, you know, I'm just curious of how that would work.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to go back to square one. I mean, we've had a lot of public input. There's been a lot of talk, you know, among the community members, stakeholders. And, and I think we, the task force ended up with a, a bridge that has a sidewalk on one side. There's no fishing platform, and it's, you know, raising the causeway, as you said, to account for sea level rise, taking into account the impacts to the budding property owners, particularly on the west side of the bridge. You know, all those things, you know, the state will take into consideration, will make sure that they're well aware of all that stuff. So, you know, I, I think, you know, we'll have a good, they'll have a good foundation to, to really work with.
My other question was talking about the power that runs underneath there. That would all be covered, or would that be something that we'd be on, that we'd look for?
Yeah, we had talked about, you know, undergrounding all the electrical lines that go across that causeway.
Right.
And the state was not quite sure if they would cover that cost. But that, to be clear, that would be the same case whether we did the traditional eighty-twenty, where we're still paying twenty percent. They wouldn't cover that either under that program. So, you know, it's really, doesn't matter as far as, you know, the, the lines go, which program we use. I mean, if they're not going to cover it, they're not going to cover it. And that's something we could come back.
And what was the, at the time, I mean, everything's changed. What, do you have numbers of what that was? We were, we're staring down the barrel above of costs on those roughly?
We had just started talking with Groton Utilities about that. You know, one of the issues is it's the main feed to Fisher's Island comes off that.
Right.
Pole there, one of those poles. And then we'd also have to have new underground services to several homes along the west side of the bridge. So, so, you know, it's, it's going to be a fairly expensive.
Right.
But I haven't gotten numbers for that yet.
All right. So, I mean, so my thought is, maybe there's to be some collaboration with Fisher's Island, since they have a benefit to this line? We should probably, is there any way that we've done any negotiation, talked to them at all?
We have not, no.
Okay. So I, I would ask for, if I have to make a referral, that we start those negotiations now? I don't want to wait. I don't want to wait until the state says, "Here's the money," and we're going, "Oh, wait, we haven't done the study yet." Let's talk to Fisher's Island, let them know, "We're about to redo this bridge. We got your line on here." You know, "What are you guys going to do to help?" Maybe there could be some collaboration with the state and some other funding that we can look at. Great to have Counsel Baumgartner on board here on the council. It's a great way, because he's hearing it live right now. But maybe there's some other funds or fees that we should start negotiating, looking into. And I encourage, if, you know, through John, speaking to John Burt, I, I encourage the town to move forward with a plan right away and start looking at those costs. We can start budgeting for it or asking for any funding and help. There must be some type of funding or grants out there that we can maybe apply for, separate from the bridge, but under power utilization. Also, maybe something in collaboration, because Fisher's Island needs that power. And I'm sure there's got to be some type of way that they have some grants that they can apply for to maybe help ease us on this end. I'm not sure. I'm just brainstorming, but I'm excited. Thank you, Greg, for the, this, this opportunity. And now we move towards, I think our number should be, how are we paying for the power? And the negotiation of the wires.
Counsel's time is expired.
So, thank you for that.
Mayor, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
More for the public than the house, because not everybody sees our packets. Greg, am I correct that this would save us approximately one point seven million that we would have to pay? Is that what it was?
Yes, that's correct.
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted that more for the public to know that.
Thank you. Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Hanover, for doing all this. I just, I only have two questions. One is, are you comfortable with this process and being able to give input and such to this project?
Very much so. It's, it's a similar process to kind of what we use for the Crystal Lake Rotary Construction. We went through the design portion of that. We're going to, we ended up, that was paid eighty percent federal, ten percent state, ten percent town. But the state ended up taking over the rights-of-way acquisition and construction, and they are experts at that. I mean, that's, they have a whole right-of-way section. That's all they do, and they get things done quickly. And, you know, it takes a lot of burden off myself and our staff, so I am very comfortable with this process.
And the second question is, do you have the, in this program, do you have the ability to say no to something? If you don't like what they're doing, are you, do they supersede you, or can you say no on something?
I mean, they have to design it to meet all the federal regulations. You know, if we ask for a purple bridge, they may say no. If they say, "You're getting a pink bridge," can we say no? I don't, you know, I mean, I guess we'll fight those battles when we get there.
Right. But you're comfortable enough with the program to, to kind of do it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Baumgartner?
Yes, as a former member of the task force with the Council Bordalon that reviewed the preliminary designs for this bridge, personally witnessed certainly your dedication to seeing through the, you know, the, the project to its completion. So just want to commend you, Director Hanover, for your continued efforts to get this project off the ground. Obviously, it's going to be a very expensive undertaking, but by participating in the Design Managed by State program, obviously, significant savings the town will be receiving. And I think a little bit of a reduced logistical headache, if you will, dealing with some of the backend issues, as you mentioned, right-of-ways and. of the backend issues, as you mentioned, right of ways and, and utility issues. It's my understanding that the DB teams, the design build teams, does the coordinations with utilities as well?
Yeah, they'll have to all coordinate with Groton Utilities, you know, throughout the project.
And I understand that the feed, even though, for example, so where the electricity is coming from, it's always a little complicated in Groton, but Groton Utilities does provide electricity to Groton Long Point, whereas knowing, for example, the other side of the bridge, it's not serviced by Groton Utilities.
Correct. I think that's right at the dividing line. It's pretty close to there, yes. So it is Groton Utilities that we're working with.
And you mentioned something about Fisher's Island. Actually, this is the first I'm, I'm hearing of that. Will there be any additional coordination outside of what you just shared? Just kind of looking to clarify what you meant by that.
Well, the, the, the electrical feed to Fisher's Island comes off the pole line there, goes, you know, into a underwater cable out to the island.
Wow.
So there will be some, you know, planned outages, you know, if we do go underground with those wires to Fisher's Island. So there'll be, obviously, some coordination needed for that.
Okay. Excellent. And as far as this program, it's, it seems like a newer system from some of my, a newer program, according to my research, hasn't been, if the program was launched more recently as, with respect to, I know, obviously, the state, federal government have bridge programs where they've paid a lion's share of the capital costs, but is this a kind of a new program the DOT launched in more recent years?
I think it's more recent. I couldn't say exactly when they launched it.
And I'd be curious what their compliance or, as far as incorporating complete streets principles for, you know, some of these projects. I'd love to ensure that, that that is being done. So we'll certainly do my part and the advocacy side was certainly with DOT to inquire as to how they incorporate complete streets principles. But as you mentioned, you know, the proposal to include a sidewalk on one side of the road and on both sides of the road, protected bike lanes, which I think is great. Anytime I'm driving down to Esker Point, whether it's, you know, to Groton Long Point, the fishermen easily will pass by four or five cyclists. So it will undoubtedly be used by, by local residents. And again, just want to thank you for, for all your work on this.
Thank you.
Counselor Gassiri?
Thank you. Director Hanover, just out of sheer curiosity, will sidewalk requirements be a part of these federal regulations? Do you have any idea?
Will it be required? I, that I don't know if it'll be required. I mean, certainly, you know, the town having a complete streets policy helps. The state likes to see that and they'll say, okay, you have this policy now that we can actually require sidewalks as part of the project. You know, we told them about the sidewalks and they're, you know, on board with it, you know, the, the people I've talked to so far, as far as putting them in as part of this project.
Okay, great. I just wasn't sure if that would fall under the federal requirements for it, but thank you.
Counselor Franco?
Thank you. Oh, go ahead. No, I'll wait. I'll wait, go ahead.
Counselor McBride?
Okay. Thank you. Great news on this, getting one hundred percent is always better than eighty percent and well, well done on the savings. I do have a couple of questions and concerns that I brought up back in July, that I just want to bring forward again to make sure they have been addressed. I have the property owners, the adjacent property owners, are five or six, been discussed with? And do they know the details of this plan?
No, there's been no discussion with any property owners as of yet.
Okay, can we, can we maybe move that to a higher party? The reason I'm concerned is, I think I recall the slope was like fifteen percent for one or two of those property owners. And if you go down to the top of Fort Hill from Fitch, that slope is seven percent. So I'm very concerned that there's going to be community action or, or legal action with those property owners. So I think we should be, we should get them involved as soon as we can. Because I think to bring it at the end is not going to be a good thing. I also wanted to ask if there's been any discussion with the Groton Long Point Association on this?
On the program itself or on?
In terms of their involvement. In July, they were at the meeting, they had information that they were prepared to talk about and discuss, but my understanding is they have not been able to. So I wanted, and the reason I'm bringing this up is, they firmly believe they own that road. And I know our attorneys state that, that's not true, but I have information that I received when I was involved. This is a letter from Town Manager Ron LeBlank, September fourth, nineteen ninety-eight. This is in response to your letter dated June eighth regarding clarification of property along Groton Long Point Road. Please find enclosed a copy of Attorney Jim Brennan's opinion. It goes on to state from Jim Brennan, who's the attorney for the town. He starts off saying a few things and then he leads with, "The title to this section of the highway is in the name of the town of Groton by virtue of a nineteen sixty-four deed from the state of Connecticut. This deed made a reference to a general statute that was enacted in sixty-three. I didn't review the statute as I'm generally familiar with it. It authorizes the state to transfer to municipalities certain state highways that the state no longer desires. This land was transferred to the town in error and it should have been transferred to the town of Groton Long Point." That was my words. This paragraph is the key word that I think we need to key, why we need to bring Groton Long Point into it. Although the technical title is in the name of the town of Groton, the control over it is exclusively in Groton Long Point by virtue of its charter. The association, not the town, has complete control over the highway and any issues with adjacent property owners should be resolved by the association as we have no jurisdiction to do so." So I bring this up because I'm all in favor of this project, but I think it's going to be delayed if we don't get Groton Long Point involved. So I'd like to see if we can bring them to the table and move this project along.
Mayor, can I add something?
Sure.
There is a little more to that. There was a correction letter that went out from our attorney shortly after that. So there is a little more to that. However, the state will do their own review. You know, they'll make their own decisions and see what they believe is, you know, is the ownership and see if it even, the sidewalks even make it to the design. Essentially, we just turn over everything at this point to them and they'll go through the public process. Obviously, we want to get input upfront so we can share it with DOT, but they'll probably be redoing processes or getting more input.
Good. Go with Texas. Counselor Franco?
Thank you. So we heard a lot of positive items on this contract. Can you tell me, are there any things you would be concerned about or that you would be leery of that you've read in this contract?
Uh, no, absolutely. To be honest, you know, I've been thinking about that, is there anything that's going to catch us here? And I don't see anything. I mean, I've talked to them about the schedule, it's still the same schedule. You know, we're still looking at construction in twenty-five, twenty-six timeframe. And that was with, you know, the project as we had it. So I really don't see any pitfalls or negative.
All right. And then the, so the state and the feds will help pay for this and they'll help the town put it out to bid. Is that, is that what I read?
Well, the town will actually bid it, we will bid it and hold the contract with the contractor, the way these programs work. But the state will, you know, they'll administer the contractor in construction, they'll do, you know, all the inspections and payment applications and things of that sort.
All right. And because this is paid for by state and federal funding, then it would all be required to use union jobs, is that correct? Union workers?
There wouldn't be necessarily union, but there'd be prevailing wages required.
Prevailing wage? It wouldn't, so I didn't, I thought the state would have union. It's prevailing wage, that was, is that correct?
Just prevailing wage, yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yep.
And also, what happens if there are cost overrides and it comes in much higher than expected?
Then, you know, the state would have to, or the feds would have to pick up that difference.
So they would be responsible for the overages?
Yeah.
And what happens if there was some type of, they get in there and there's a much more bigger issue than what they foresaw? I know there's engineers there, but I, you're having two pieces of land to have the bridge and what if, I don't know a lot about how this all works, but what if they found erosion issues and they had to do more engineering and more, you know, building walls or something like that, a lot more than what they originally thought because they got into it? What, would they, would also cover all that as well?
Yeah, it essentially becomes their, their project.
Okay.
With our input after this.
And, Mr. Burt, for just, what, Mr. Burt, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. So what had just been noted, discussed about the bringing Groton Long Point Association and the potential that residents in that area may sue? If this was?
It wouldn't be a lawsuit against the state, by the way. Like, I mean, we wouldn't be part of any, any action with the sidewalks. I would not anticipate.
All right. Even, whether there were sidewalks or not, if, if neighbors wanted to sue or the Groton Long Point Association was upset and they sued or whatever, there's, you're saying it would not be the town, it would be the state?
Well, anybody could be sued, so, you know, I don't want to say that, but we primarily the state.
All right. And then if by any chance an attorney came up and said, well, you know what, we found that Groton Long Point does own this and it should be theirs, who would be responsible then?
The state.
The state. And then what would happen?
Their attorney, their attorneys would fight it out. So I, I'm sure they're going to do extensive research and, and, you know, have a good, you know, probably the AG's office weigh in on, on anything if it looks, you know, questionable at all.
All right. Well, I'm very excited that we have found a way to pay for the Groton Long Point Bridge with one hundred percent funding. That's very exciting. And this has been something since when I first got on the council that I've been an advocate for getting replaced and repaired because this is basically the only way out from Alford's Cove and Groton Long Point into the community. And if this bridge did get downgraded to the point where cars couldn't drive on it, it would be quite the issue, especially if emergency response vehicles could not cross that bridge. So I'm very excited about this. And thank you, and everybody involved for bringing this forward and getting us this ulterior, ulterior funding. Thank you very much.
Counselor Board along?
Uh, thanks. In this document, the state, it doesn't disclose the power lines in here anywhere. Or did I miss it perhaps?
Which document are you referring to?
The whole agreement with the state and all that.
It doesn't get into specifics of the design.
I just want to disclose that the lines are there. Are they aware the lines are there?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they are. So as I said before, I think, you know, and I think, remember, I remember bringing this up, that's how I knew about the Fisher's Island line and is that, yes, we need to get active on that now. We should be knowing what that's going to cost us now and how we're going to negotiate that and seek funding for that. I also do remember being part of the group where I did bring up the concern of the neighbors down below as I spoke at the beginning and I talked about the, the pitch and those houses that were down below and saying, you know, we need to get people involved earlier. And so I do align my marks with Counselor McBride in the sense that we've made negotiating deals with the state in the past and we saw where those have ended. We believe that the state was going to do their due diligence, we saw where that ended. I ask that we start now doing the work, since we've been at this for a while, and having those communications and having fair discussion ahead of time. We, if I was an owner of a house at that corner and the picture's going to go up, I should already be, like, talked, that should already be something that's being talked about. It shouldn't be something that the state's going to contact them later. The town should be saying, we're planning to replace the bridge, the state's going to be repairing it. Here's some drawings from the contractors that we dealt with and I'm not sure where the state's going to go, but I want to make sure you guys know. That's one of the things about the Property Reuse Committee, unfortunately, it doesn't cover bridges, but maybe we should add it. It, it is a thing where Groton can do better with bringing everybody around the table. This is no discredit to Greg Hanover or any town staff in particular. I bring up the suggestions and they go nowhere. I brought it up for Claude Chester, I'm already hearing the backlash of how does it already designed for there and no one else has been able to talk about it yet. It's great to bring up ideas up here, but while we're planning, we have to involve our community. So I, again, as I said on the task force and stated, encourage that we start doing our due diligence. That should be part of our discussions long before. So that we're not standing here holding the bag later going, well, you know, and they're suing us and now the bridge is on hold and, you know, we need to do more of that work and collaboration and community outreach at an earlier point. And getting ahold of Fisher's Island and, and nailing down that power line and figuring out that collaboration. So I'm a little nervous and it doesn't talk anything about in here, what if we don't get the funding for the wires? It's not in here. So I'm, I'm concerned when we go into an agreement with the state. So my question is to the town manager, have the attorneys looked this over? Do they understand the concern with the power lines and the GLP and everything else? Because again, I, I'm concerned about agreeing to something, great to have the money. Everyone's so excited about, you know, the Mystic Oral School. We're going to have a pool, we're going to have this, we're going to have a Pratt Building. Oh, Porsche, our Council Board along, point of order. You know, I just encourage that the work has been done and I trust, you say, don't judge staff and don't question staff, but that's what I'm up here to do is to question.
Counselor's time has expired.
Thank you. To question, to make sure the staff's work is being done and that we as a council are agreeing to a fair and equitable document. As Counselor McBride stated, there's work that has not been done.
Counselor's time has expired.
And I had already brought that up. So I'm a little concerned.
All right. So the, the state's not going to put specifics like power lines in there. They have, they have their, this has gone through the AG's office, this isn't going to change. We have had our attorneys look at, this is not going to change. Still, we want to take, and this is going to be similar whether we do the eighty percent program or the hundred percent program. They're not going to do that, period. So we have to decide if we want a hundred percent or go with eighty percent. Though I could tell you that the, I think we all know, the engineering section of public works has, there's a lot of work going on right now, so I highly recommend doing this one rather than the other one.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Point of, point of information to the town manager or to our, can we safely move forward agreeing to this without the backwork being done? It's not a matter of, I know the town manager has stated the money and a hundred percent funding.
Counselor Board along, just, just the question.
Right. So my question is, to agree, it's great, I want everything paid at a hundred percent, but I also want it to be done ethically and properly.
Well, what I wouldn't want to do is miss our place in line. I'm getting this, yes.
But sometimes missing.
Counselor Board along.
I feel totally, I'm speaking place, I feel totally comfortable moving forward with this. I don't, I, I can't imagine giving up one point seven billion. The, the state's committed to public input and we'll do our, our help coordinate that and get, you know, get comments to them and make sure they have a full picture.
My last point of information is where in this clause is our back out if something was to go disarray with GLP and the neighbors and all that? If we had to back out, I mean, it's great.
Counselor Board along, you do not have the floor.
Once the state starts spending money on a bridge and start all that, there's not going to be backing out. We're not able to.
You do not have the floor. Thank you.
Whether it's, whichever, yeah. Whether it's, whichever, yeah, we did, unless, unless we wanna pay everything back, but yeah, that's not really an option.
Is there any further discussion? Okay.
Just very quickly.
Sure. Counsel Franco.
How many public meetings did we have?
Uh, I believe it was three.
You had three public meetings, um, it was in the newspaper, I mean, I've seen articles written on this.
Yeah. Yeah, all the task force meetings were recorded, and people watched those, and I know, I did get comments from some of the property owners, you know, that had watched those meetings, had questions, which we answered.
And is it typical that the town, when we do a project, do we actually notify the neighbors right there? Do we send letters, like, if you're doing road construction?
Typically, once we know what we're doing, we will.
Okay.
You know, I, I don't wanna go out there and just say, well, we're putting a bridge in, and they start asking questions, and I don't have answers to give them.
Right.
But, yeah, we always, you know, anytime we have a, even a paving project and stuff, we'll send out letters, just notifying people what's going on.
Okay, so, potentially, they'll get, they'll be notified at some point?
Oh, at some point, yeah, and like I said, the state right away, um, department, if you will, is, is, they're very good at what they do, I mean, that's all they do, is work with property owners and getting slope rights easements and things of that sort.
All right, well, I thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining, thank you. Sure, 10-minute recess, we'll be back at 8:15. The council is back from recess at 8:15.
I just had a point of information there, um, I just wanted to ask the town manager to send, if he has that document that Councilor McBride referenced, that he had correspondence with, with the, from 1998, if you have that. Town manager.
I'll, I'll.
John, are you there?
He may, he may not be back.
It says his staff is talking. Something.
Sorry about, sorry about that, I didn't issue with my computer for a second there, yeah, I will send that out to everyone.
All right, perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to Connecticut Deep, Pura Public Education and Governmental Programming and Education Technology Grant. I make a motion to recommend a resolution authorizing the town manager or his designee to execute any and all documents and to perform all acts deemed necessary or appropriate to apply for and accept the Public Education and Governmental Programming and Education Technology Investment Account grant funding in the amount of $41,760.42, so I'll move.
Second, Boarder.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Boarder, and we have Director Mealy here for, and Mr. Greeley here for some background.
Good evening, GMTV, under the umbrella of the library, is here to ask the town council to approve a grant application of the $41,760 from the Public Education and Governmental Programming and Education Technology Investment Account, also known as PEGPISHA. Some of you may have remembered, we have applied for this grant before, and most recently of last year in 2022, and we asked for quite a large sum of money, but we only received about, maybe a quarter?
Forty-four thousand.
Of, of what we asked for, so, um, this grant, we're looking to replace and upgrade various video equipment, peripherals, and other such things related to video, and we're hoping with this funding, if awarded, that we can apply that to the items that we did not purchase back in 2022. And Sean is available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Counsel Boarder.
No, I don't have much to say about this one, I mean, it's no brainer, when you have a grant that's basically, I mean, I hate to even waste your time coming here, so, but thank you for applying for grants and being competitive in that area, um, it pretty much explains everything in here, and I think it's, you know, anytime we can get an opportunity to obtain money for the sake of Groton that's not affecting the taxpayers, I mean, I say go for it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Baumgardner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just want to commend both of you for your steadfast efforts to ensure that Groton continues to make requests for the specific grant. So, I know in years past, as was mentioned, 2020 and 2022, we applied for and received fundings for, for critical projects, and now we are the beneficiary of a lot of those projects, they were paused a bit due to the pandemic, but nice to even be in this building, some of the upgrades, certainly, you know, for the folks who have served on this council from before the pandemic, you know, definitely taken notice, and can't wait to see the future work you, you both continue to do, so, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Franco.
Thank you, in the motion, it actually says that you're receiving the grant fund in the amount of $41,760.42. While you just said 44, and on our page 50, it says you received 44,000, on our page 50, it's the second to the last paragraph of anybody, you know?
I, I believe when, Mr. Greeley, you can correct me if I'm wrong, when you said 44,000, were you talking about what you received last time?
Well, last year.
Right.
Last year, okay, so this year's almost 42.
We actually asked for.
A hundred and thirteen thousand last year, we received 44,000, which was one of the five, uh, one of the only five grants that received that highest amount.
Okay.
They, they didn't have as big of a fund, and they had more requests, so they reduced it down, so, but we received one of the biggest awards during the last round.
All right, thank you for clarifying that, 'cause I, I was mixed up, thank you very much, but I'm glad you received the grant, and absolutely would support this, and I'm glad you'll be able to take care of a lot of your needs.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, on to Board of Education Non-Lapsing Fund, page 64, there is no motion prepared in advance for this.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
Sorry to interrupt, um, before we begin, I just want to disclose that I am employee of the Groton Public Schools, I will be recusing myself as this has to do with Board of Ed funding, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any discussion? Counsel Baumgardner?
Yes, um, I just want to commend the mayor for placing this item on the agenda, um, I know it's been a concept that has been floated around for some time, I do want to fully acknowledge Counselor Boarder, as this is one of her referrals, um, I believe dating back to even per, prior to this council term. It is an idea that I think is long overdue, has been done in New London, we are very privileged to be graced with the presence of a, of the Finance Director for the City of New London, Counselor McBride, who is, was very involved in establishing this policy, and has a lot of, overwhelming amount of technical expertise as far as the implementation of, of this, I believe what would be the, a policy in the City of New London. Earlier today, I think the town manager provided a copy, or a copy of the resolution that the city has, and I, I think this is a great starting place, having reviewed the document in the past, and, um, just a quick question for, for Manager Burt, have you revet, reviewed the New London policy?
I took a quick read-through, and, um, just for the benefit of the public, just let me say real briefly, but this, not the, just what this act allows.
Yes.
Um, so, the unexpended, unexpended education fund account, now typically, whatever funds that the town threw its tax collection issues to the Board of Ed at the end of the school year, any unexpended funds returns to the town to the general fund. What this allows for is for funds, any remaining funds, instead of coming back to the town, it can stay with the Board of Ed, it has to be by law used for an educational purpose, the town council can further refine it, and say, for example, that it's only gonna be used for CIPs. Now, and just to make it clear, the Board of Ed also, um, you know, would want to adopt a policy, even if we had a policy saying it could be kept, they could choose not to, so, they would have a role in this also.
I just have a point of information.
One sec. Counsel Baumgardner, do you yield the floor?
I do.
Okay.
I.
Counsel Franco.
I'm just wondering, because it's Counsel Boarder's referral, does she wanna speak, she should be able to speak to it first, as that's usually the case, and explain it, and tell us what she thinks about it, and why she wants it.
Sure. Counsel Boarder.
Well, I'll have to dust my brain off, because this was something I sent in, and unfortunately, many other things had come after I put this in, and unfortunately, I don't have control if it's on the agenda, but I am thankful tonight. My thought back then was, uh, you know, the increase of the budget was going up for Board of Ed, people were speaking about funds that were allocated to the Board of Ed that were not being used, and some of those were earmarked purposely for education, and if they were not used in its entirety, it came back into the general fund, as the town manager had stated. I was particularly interested in this after serving on the RTM, where I heard overwhelmingly just concerns about how the Board of Ed's budget is, uh, operates. I thought that this would give it the proper use of the funds coming in, and, you know, as Town Manager Burt stated, you know, if there was remaining, it could be put towards CIPs or other things like that. As a person who's worked in, 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 you know, corporate world with different medical companies, and I, and then if you know how the state works, when I've worked in the base, there's this fiscal year, and at the end, there's a spend, and everyone just spends to spend, not because of need sometime, and the Board of Ed has allocated a certain amount of money, and whatever they don't use, it almost shouldn't be penalized, because they didn't, like, they had a positive revenue left over, it's a way of keeping it encouraging, maybe they're gonna get new supplies with that, which won't increase the budget for next year. So, if you have fiscal responsibility embedded in your policy, you create that ability to overspend, and I'm not saying that the Board of Ed does this, but there's a tendency to. but there's a tendency to quickly spend down so you could ask for the same amount next year. Because who wants to come before council and say, oh, well, we didn't spend this much, and why are you asking for a raise? So there's a way that we can collaborate and have the money that's coming in, that's dedicated to our children for education, stay with education. Um, and so that, that was my thought process behind it. I think it's a great model. Um, and I just don't think things should come back in the general fund that's supposed to be helping our children. Um, and I also thought that this could help our debacle with sports fields. What could this do? The Board of Ed could make sure that they're being fiscally responsible throughout the year and apply for all these certain monies that they can get, right? It would stop them from over, you know, you know, applying, bringing all these funds, and if there's positive revenue, starting to address our concerns at Fitch High School for our fields. That's how I saw this working tenfold, and we could actually put it in there that we earmark it for a CIP for improvement of fields. So there's a way that we can kind of do that without bonding, without doing other things. Um, I'm not an expert on this. I read through the idea when I saw New London do it, and then I searched other towns, and that's how I came to my thoughts. Um, but I, I've opened a discussion and to see, um, you know, where, uh, everyone wants to go with this, and, uh, I can't see why Board of Ed would not. I know Dr. Grenier, when I brought this up one year, when he was still, he stated, "I would support that," you know? Um, so that's my thought.
Thank you. Counsel Parker?
Just a question. Have we discussed this with the Board of Ed currently, as we do have a new superintendent?
I, I had, um, reached out to, uh, Susan Austin in the last few days as well as, um, uh, Kim Watson, uh, just to let them know it was on the addenda and sent them the link just in case they wanted to participate. Um, not that it was needed, required, but, um, you know, I think it's a relatively new concept to them. I don't, you know, I, I'm not, I sent some information today, but it's not a lot of time for them to look over. Um, I do see though that, uh, Superintendent Austin just got on as an attendee if you want to, if you wanted me to promote her.
Yes, please.
And my other question is, does, is, does this, with our military, does that take that into account? Because we get DODIA money and all these other fundings. How do we? I guess the question would be for Superintendent Austin, if she could, how would this help her or maybe not help her? Thank you.
And, and just to get to point out, this really sprung on them last minute, so I don't know how much time they spent with it.
I get that, and, cause I did not have a chance to read, um, the information sent today, cause I was back-to-back meeting, so we from work and going to TBCC, I did not have a chance to read the non-lapsing fund from New London, so, um, I can't, uh, if there's a vote to come up, I wouldn't be prepared to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, there, there won't be, um, I mean, if someone makes a motion, there'll be a vote, but typically we've handled, uh, and Town Manager, we can do it differently if you want, but direction we've done typically through consensus.
Right, and then that, and that's all we're looking for tonight is, do you want staff to draft anything, and if so, do you have any, uh, upfront ideas that you would want considered?
Thank you. Superintendent, can you speak to, um, how the Board of Ed feels about this?
Um, well, good evening. We really haven't had an opportunity to discuss it at the Board of Ed. Um, I was made aware of it just recently and certainly have done a little bit of homework, looking at other districts or in surrounding southeastern Connecticut. And I would say about fifty percent of the districts, if that, have, have done this. I know that the board very carefully prepares its budget every year, and we are really very good stewards of the finances and, um, not that we spend every amount if there is money left over. Um, we have actually paid back some of the health savings that we have, um, had to use when we brought in zero percent budgets and also our OPEB. We've been very responsible for taking care of some of those costs. Um, and then there have been times when it has, the board has returned funds. Um, but we tend to, you know, spend it. We don't haphazardly spend. We really set a budget and we use our dollars to spend accordingly. Um, there are times when budgets are tight, and I remember when Dr. G was here, and even I've done this, where we say to principals to hold off on the last twenty-five percent until we, you know, get to a point where we realize that, um, we're okay, because we certainly would never want to have to come to the town to ask for more money. But as you know, this year has been a year of inflation, so all our costs have gone up. I know that they've gone up at our homes and they've gone up in our schools from diesel fuel to heating to supplies, if you can get them. So, um, you know, you prepare a budget a year and a half ahead of time. So you, you just don't always know what the cost will actually be when it comes to the time to make those purchases. But I say that we really are good stewards. I mean, if there is an opportunity like this, um, I would like to find out more information, and I think the board needs to really examine this. So I really can't speak for them because we haven't had the opportunity to talk about non-lapsing funds. But I have done a little bit of, um, work behind the scenes with my, um, central office finance director and, um, you know, we've kind of, he's gone through his CASBO group to see who else has been doing it. Um, so I just would need a little more time to do some more homework. But it, you know, it doesn't seem like a bad idea to me, as long as it could be used for educational reasons, you know?
Thank you. Counsel Parker, are you yielding the floor?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Jones?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm just a little concerned bringing sort of a major program like this without the Department of Ed having chance, or the Board of Ed having chance to even to be here or to have had some time to think about it or even give us a response to it. So, it's not, it, I'm not really in favor of sort of trying to draft a policy like this on top of a, of the largest budget group in our town who hasn't had any say on this, so. Um, and I'm also a little concerned about having extra money floating around in the Board of Ed. I, I agree. I think you, the Board of Ed has done a pretty good job on budgeting, and they come right up to the end, and having sort of extra funds with money floating around seems to, there's concerns with that, and how that's going to be managed, and what are you going to do with it, and where is it going to go? So, I'm a little leery of this, but, um, I would love if the Board of Ed wants to up, take it up and, and, uh, give us more information and make a formal presentation if they even favor doing something like this. I don't even know if you wanted something like this. And that was really my first question is where this, where did this come from? So, um, I, if you want to go ahead and present something, then, then I will listen to it. But at the moment, I don't like trying to tell the largest budget group in our, um, in our town how to sort of run their division, so.
Thank you. Counsel McBride?
Thank you. I'm in, I'm in full support of this, um, this policy or initiative, whatever you want to call it. I do have some experience in it in the past, you know, five or seven years. Uh, just to give some background, it, the main reason is incentive, and I completely understand, uh, Superintendent's approach that they're, they're not spending money at the end of the year because that's not, I'm not trying to say that, but whenever there's incentive that you don't need to spend and utilize those dollars, that you can carry them over to the next year, it, it always provides some incentive. And I know we're, in my past, uh, we thought the same thing. And it worked out very well for both the Board of Ed and the general fund in that the money was saved and it was used for future, future costs. Uh, just some other things. We first rolled it out in New London, we rolled it out strictly to be used for capital purchases only, and that was used for a couple of years, and it was beneficial from the cities, from the, from the city, our city, you know, how it would work for us is also helpful in that the maintenance and any CapEx dollars that we would have to budget on the, on the town side, uh, we would need to budget for because that, those monies were available. So that helped out both sides. Uh, over time, that, that money continued to increase, and then the Board of Ed, uh, wanted to utilize it for other things beyond capital. So then we changed the, uh, the most recent ordinance, I think two years ago, to be allowed for operational purposes, and that they really wanted, and that, that actually gave them some, some more incentive to save as well as to be able to use those funds, uh, for, for operations, which also helps in a budget situation if we're, you know, if we're disagreeing over eight hundred thousand dollars and we have, um, an allotment of eight hundred thousand dollars, maybe the Board of Ed could use that to offset their budget. So there's, there's a reason for that. The other thing I think is important to consider is, I, I can't speak for the Board of Ed, but I know in other municipalities, a lot of, um, a lot of Board of Eds aren't having the ability to fulfill all their positions, and as a result of that, they do have excess, uh, cash available at the end of the year. So, I, I don't know if Groton's that way, but if that's the case, this would allow them the ability to, uh, you know, safeguard some of those funds for a future, for a future expense. Uh, two other pieces I just want to give some detail on. The two, the two key pieces, or a couple two pieces, the two percent a year in the first paragraph, that, that two percent a year, if it's a fifty million budget, that's the cap of what the total amount of the, the, uh, reserve fund can, can get to for that one year. So just so everybody knows, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be able to save more than two percent of the budget. That's a, that's a policy directive by the state. The other item to bear in mind is on the second page in number five, um, in New London, we started out at two percent, and then we went up to four percent, and the one that you received today, uh, was four percent of the total funds appropriated. New London recently changed in August to allow for six percent because you want to make sure that funds can grow, and, and the mayor, the administration changed that to six percent, so therefore that account can go to three percent. So that's really the council's decision in terms of how, how much you want that to grow to, because if you want to limit it to a million or two million, you got to make that parameter. Uh, but I am supportive of it. I think it provides, and it, and it also, it really helped the two finance departments work together and much better. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take my turn, um, just briefly. Um, I, I'm supportive of the idea of this, and I'll try to explain why, and Manager Burt, just correct me if I'm wrong in understanding how this works. So, i- i- if the, if Groton Public Schools expends all their funds in a fiscal year, then, then, um, it's just like this doesn't exist. But if they do, um, have some money left over, like theoretically if they had two hundred thousand dollars left over, and when their, when their budget proposal comes in for the next year, let's say they're looking at a, a million dollar increase, then they could potentially, instead of asking for the million dollar increase, ask for an eight hundred thousand dollar increase and use the two hundred thousand dollars from the year before to offset that, um, to offset that difference. And what that would do is instead of the MBR going up by a million, it would go up by eight hundred thousand. So, is that sort of my understanding is correct on this?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Um, for that reason, uh, I, I, I think this is a, I think this is a good idea, honestly. Um, obviously, if, if, if Groton Public Schools and the Board of Ed isn't, isn't interested in, I mean, that's, that's another thing, but, um, but I, I think it's, I think it's a great idea. Um, and, you know, I, I'd be, I'd be in favor of, of, uh, creating a draft policy if that's what the, what Groton Public Schools and the Board of Ed is interested in. Thank you. Counsel Borlon?
Uh, thank you. Um, this is something almost two years ago I brought up, so I apologize if people haven't heard of it. Um, unfortunately, I don't have the machine to control that, so I put the recommendation forward. I have to wait for it to become an agenda item. So I don't know when it's coming, so I rely on the town staff, town mayor, to then facilitate, uh, the note to everybody else. I did ask at that time at New London's draft being put in this, unfortunately, it was not, and so I reached out to a counselor friend in New London, and he sent it to me, and then it was added after. So it's not a difference of reading this one or not, it's just the concept. I encourage the council to move forward with considering a draft. Having town staff move forward with the draft doesn't mean it's going to be enacted. There's many things that have come before us that we have not put forward. But in the meantime, the Board of Ed can start thinking about it, looking into it, um, and, and maybe have some recommendations that they can send forward, but we don't, you know, it would allow us to have the town staff move forward with it. Um, I don't see where, if someone told me that I was going to get a million dollars, and if I only spent a percent of it, that I could hold it for something that I wouldn't want that. This protects the Board of Ed. It doesn't say, fine, you know, if you, you know, it doesn't penalize you in any way. It actually enhances the program, enhances education, and it encourages, uh, the well-doing of what they already do by applying for grants. So I would be very motivated as a, as a board, uh, to say, oh my God, another grant's here, I don't have enough time, but you know what? If I get that other million dollar grant, which is going to give me a positive revenue on the other end, I don't have to give that back to the general fund. Over and over, overwhelmingly, I heard Dr. Grenier state how much money was going back into the general fund when they were asking for their new budget every year, and they said, how much money do we give back? This is what we gave back. This is a chance to retain those funds for what they were earmarked to do, and that it's to serve our community and our children, and let it be CIPs, athletic task force fields that are deplorable right now. We have a need to fix our, our, uh, our infrastructure up at high school and, uh, to be competitive with our neighbors, which we currently are not. This is a way to have those funds available. It would just allow for, if a grant was to come in tomorrow, um, that they weren't planning on, um, what they, what we gave them in the last budget cycle, that would be a positive that they could move, and they don't have to worry about losing it or finding, sometimes it's like you have a program in mind, but it hasn't started yet. Well, by the budget ending, they have to give it back to the general. They can hold it now and let that program develop, and they can re-instate. Um, so I think it's a phenomenal idea, phenomenal concept, and it comes with a lot of assets, and there's no loss to the, the Board of Ed at all. There's no, it's only a positive. It's, it's, uh, so I just, you know, again, having a council go for, having the town staff go forward with drafting something that mimics like New London or what the other ones have, doesn't hurt. But I, I would have liked that the, the town manager and the town mayor had invited and had everybody on board, um, with this. So, there's one or two ways. We can move forward and have them do a draft, and then we can invite the Board of Ed to come back at our first draft read. You know, that's one way to do it, because there's going to be many reads to this. So I, I, I would not have that slow us down today. Because this has been on the, uh, agenda item list for over almost two years.
Counsel's time is expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Franco?
So I, I just have some questions. Um, maybe Ms. Austin, you can answer. Um, so if you get grant money, you have to put that in to the general fund if you don't use it by the end of the year?
Um, with our grants that are competitive, they usually are five-year grants, and, um, especially through the Department of Defense, um, I don't think we've ever given back more than about, um, ten dollars on a million dollar grant. We, we spend those competitive grants as best we can without overspending. So I don't know of any other grants that you're speaking about. Um, you know, with our Title I grants, they kind of have a, a wraparound cycle, so you spend those down all the way before the federal government gives you your next year's Title I grants. Um, we have had, um, Portia's right, there have been times when there have been unexpended funds, and whether we've paid back to our health savings account, because as you know, in order to get those zero percents many years in a row, we've had to utilize that. We've also, um, when Dr. G and I got here, the OPEB account needed to be corrected, so we've done a lot of correction with that as well. So we've really tried to be very good stewards of the funding. Um, you know, most of the time, I would say, especially in the past couple of years, um, we've really budgeted for those funds, and we've needed those funds, and we've spent them. Um, there might have been some, by the time you finish up a budget cycle and complete it, you know, it's after the end of June, you kind of go into September, and the auditors come in, and then I'm sure there's, and John Burke can probably give you the details on that, um, and so could my finance director, but he's not here tonight. Um, but there are times that, yeah, the funds do go back to the town if they haven't been totally expended. I think it's an interesting concept, um, and, you know, certainly would like to know more, but I can't really speak on behalf of the board. You know, we have a finance committee that things usually go through first, and then through a COW, so the board would really need to, you know, to be educated on this and to have a say in it, I believe. Um, so in some, at some point in this process, um, they just weren't available. This was kind of a last-minute, um, on, thing on our agenda. So I was able to come after my last meeting.
And I, and I have questions because I've heard like you could do two percent of your budget into this non-lapsing fund, and your budget is how much on the norm?
Um, our, our total budget for the year?
Yes.
I mean, our total, total education budget you're asking?
Yes.
It's, um, up to seventy-nine million dollars.
And?
This past year.
Point of clarification, the statute only allows two percent of the appropriation of the town, so it'd be two percent of, I think, around fifty. Just a point of clarification.
And for the per, the possibility of having this account where you would be responsible, I, I would assume what it's, what they're basically saying is you would then be responsible for your CIPs with your savings that you put into the non-lapsing fund, or would the town be responsible for your CIPs? I'm not exactly sure, because?
I don't, I don't understand that either. I really don't understand a lot of the details, and I think it depends on how the policy is written. It sounds like to me.
Right, and, yeah, and, and I don't know how you are with all of, you know, your OPEB. And, yeah, and, and I don't know how you are with all of, you know, your OPEB health savings and all that, and where you are.
Well, it's, it's a constant, Rachel, it's something that we consider every year, and we're, we've been very careful in the past couple of years not to, to strain that, because it's really important that we keep a healthy health savings account, especially in this day and age, as you know. So.
Right.
Just trying to be really responsible with all of that.
Right. And then, so I just have questions about this, and if, if at the end of the year, let's just say, the new budget comes out, and you're asking for an increase, and you have money in that account, and we're saying, use that every year to offset your increase for the next year, it's not like you're saving anything in there that you'd be able to spend it on, then. It's just basically offsetting the next year. And if it came to the general fund, I don't know. And if you didn't have an increase, I mean, because there's been many years that you didn't have an increase.
Right.
And a, a lot of years, I mean, actually, because, I mean, from the graphs that you've showed us, there's many years that you've had nothing. So, which puts you, from what I've seen, below average on budget compared to surrounding towns. So I don't, I don't know where you're going to get the savings to put into the non-lapsing fund, and...
Like I said, I think it's a really interesting concept. I think that I, I, you know, I want to know more, and I know the board will want to know more about it. If it's a benefit to the school district and to the town, I'm certainly interested.
Right. So that's, I think, where I am, that I am not at a position at all, nearly, to look for an ordinance to be written at this time, but rather, because, I mean, basically, there's alternatives on here that say, direct the town manager to pursue a creation of a draft policy, and I'm not, I'm not there.
Point of information, I just want to clarify, it's not an ordinance, just to make sure we say it correctly.
I'm sorry, a policy. I, um, I think I would need more information, and it would have to come from Board of Ed as well, and maybe all the research that you would do, and to see how that would work, and us to have more time to research on our side as well, to see how it would impact budget sessions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McBride?
Thank you. I'll, again, reiterate, I'm in favor of moving forward with not necessarily approving anything, but having the administration move forward and develop some draft plans for this council to review. With that being said, there's one other piece of information I forgot to explain. There's a lot of, or there was a lot of people opposed to this over time, and the reason being, my, my interpretation is, because traditionally municipalities always had a concern with their general fund balance. So, and what I didn't mention was, in our policy in New London, we had a general fund balance years ago of like 3% or, you know, whatever it was, it was very low. So one of the requirements we put in our policy is to require the fund balance policy that we established be taken care of first. So if the fund balance policy of the city wasn't adhered to, and we had it growing 1% every year to get to 13% or 16%, this couldn't, this policy couldn't be utilized. So I forgot to mention that, but I think I would, you know, encourage John Burt to have something in there that states that general fund balancing has to be met of X percent or some dollar, because that is utmost, the most utmost concern of, of the town, and that's where a lot of the traditional opposition to this policy comes from. But if that can be taken care of, and, and the, and the town is sitting on a good fund balance, I think it's worth pursuing. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jones?
Just a question, if I can ask Counselor McBride a question. Does New London School System, are they under the MBR?
Yes.
Programs?
They are.
Yes, sir.
Point of clarification?
Sure.
Or a question for the town manager. Could he just briefly ballpark how much in the last, like, I don't know, cycles have been returned from Board of Ed, if you?
Yeah, I actually have that.
Thank you.
Um, now, three of the years are really skewed because of things going on with state budgets, and essentially Board of Ed and, and the town council came up with a way to combat, you know, whether it's being shorted on, on, you know, revenues from the state or else, other cuts. But literally speaking, I'll, I'll start the latest year I have is 21, $2,400. I won't state the change after, but $2,400. You're for that $97,000, you're for that $39,000, $34,000. Then we get into those three years where there's, where it's really skewed, and you really can't, you really have to discount these three years. You're, you're 267,000, 660, and 356. But again, there was something completely different going on with those. Prior to that, 49,000, 10,000, 82,000. So you're, you're always under 100,000.
Okay.
And usually on the lower end.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Baumgartner?
Just a clarifying question. What would, would we need to make a motion to direct the manager to create a policy?
No.
But... Can that just be done by consensus?
Yeah. Good. Manager Burt, I have four counselors expressing approval. I don't know if there's any others. Okay, so I'm seeing five. Is there any other discussion?
I'm sorry?
Yes?
Who's giving consensus? Do we have differences?
Sure. Counselor Westervelt, Counselor Borlon, Counselor McBride, Counselor Baumgartner, and Melendez.
Can this be in conjunction with the town manager, please, with the Board of Ed, before he writes it? Just to confirm everything?
Yeah, well, certainly, my, just to answer your question, certainly my support is contingent on the Board of Ed and Grotton Public Schools wanting this, so...
So would you want me to wait then to get their input before drafting?
Sure. Okay. Counselor Franco?
So what I'm understanding is the council's saying, write a policy, but we haven't even heard from the Board of Ed if they're even interested in this.
Well, we just addressed that.
So if they're not interested in this?
Sure.
You're still going to write a policy, because you just said, you directed the town manager to write it.
We just addressed this. Counselor, Manager Burt, can you just state what you just said?
Well, it's...
Yes. Once Superintendent Austin lets me know what the Board of Ed's thinking is, then I'll, if they're in favor of it, I'll write it. If not, I'll report that back to the council for further direction.
Thank you.
Oh, I didn't...
I have the floor still.
Sorry, I heard a pause, I apologize.
Sorry. I didn't hear the town manager say that, I'm sorry. But I hear what we're saying, and I hear a lot of comparison to New London, but, I mean, I don't understand also, like, how our budgets are completely different than how New London does it, from what I'm understanding, and from what I've heard, but from our previous financial director. And so to compare us to New London, which has been done before, I don't think is correct in how we should be doing our business here. And I would also like to notate Grotton has a mill rate of about 24, and New London has a mill rate somewhere around 42. So, I mean, there's some differences here that are pretty drastic when you look at our budgets and how we do them. And I have some great concerns here, and I think to be so in favor so quickly without even understanding the full scope of all of this, or even how it works, is, is a little shocking to me and a little concerning. So I'm not saying I'm against it, but what I'm saying is, I need more information, and I'm surprised that this council is willing to move forward on a policy without even knowing all the details of it. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Westervelt?
I agree with what Counselor Franco was saying. My little, my little thought here is that it's a draft policy, and we've got to start looking at it somehow. And I don't think there's any, I think we should start looking at it somehow, and I don't think there's any drawback to investigating it. And if it turns out to be something that's not doable, then we just don't do it. But if we don't look into it, then we're not going to move forward anyway.
You're asking him to draft a policy and to take time to draft a policy?
Counselor Westervelt, you have the floor.
Well, creation of a draft policy. Yes, draft policy, it depends on how you, you know, the semantics of, of the wording, but you're creating a draft policy, yes. And if it doesn't fly, then it doesn't fly. But we won't know that unless we try it. Thank you.
Point of information?
What's your question?
For the town manager. You know, basically, my understanding is that, so we're directing to create a draft, but my, my point of information would be, while that's in the process, which is not going to happen overnight, the better way to handle this, which once again, I'm not in charge of handling the meetings, would be, could you invite the Board of Ed and give them, you know, at the later date, we can put it back on the agenda as well. Meanwhile, town staff are investigating the policy.
I mean, I can do whichever way the council wants. My understanding that right now is, we'll wait, before I draft it, or staff drafts it, we'll wait to hear from the Board of Ed to see whether they want it, and whether they have any things they want to ask for. Then if they do want it, then we'll, I'll draft it, and then we'll all get together. If they don't want it, I'll report back to the council and seek further direction from the council.
Thank you.
My point of information, though, is that it's above the board and on camera. I think it's important to have those deliberations happen here.
Counselor Borlon?
So my point of information...
We have a consensus. We've had two rounds of speaking, and we've reached consensus. The town manager has what he needs, so we will be moving on.
Can I just ask my point of information about...
You already asked. It was answered.
But I have a different, I think, is, we should invite them here.
Okay.
Is that possible?
Anytime it's going to be on the agenda, I'll certainly send out an invite.
Because this time, everyone's saying they don't know, and they didn't have time, so I want to make sure.
Counselor Borlon, you do not have the floor.
We, we get proper notice.
Thank you, Counselor Borlon.
Thank you.
Moving on to, thank you Superintendent for being here.
Thank you. I, I was really here to be a little more informed. I appreciate it, and I will do some more homework, too, and make sure the board is aware.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
On to Stormwater Authority, can be found on page 70. This is similar to the last item, no motion, looking for consensus.
Do we want to get Counselor Casari?
Yes. Manager Burt, do you want to know background on this?
Yeah, I'll, I'll read what I kind of consider a synopsis of it, of a stormwater authority. And then this was referral by Counselor McBride as New London has a, a stormwater authority. Prior to '21, it was a pilot program with, I believe, only four municipalities allowed to potentially participate. New London was one of those. And in '21, it was opened up for all municipalities. In 2021, acting on recommendations of the Governor's Council on Climate Change, Connecticut Legislature passed PA 21115, this enables municipalities to create a stormwater authority to help manage stormwater and improve resilience to climate change by assessing a scaled user fee based on the amount of stormwater runoff of property generates. So like, if you were, you had a large parking lot, you would, you obviously have a larger fee. Funding generated from the user fee can be used to maintain and enhance stormwater treatment measures and resilient infrastructure, and provide matching funds for state and federal grants. That's really a synopsis, and then Counselor McBride would be more an expert on it than me.
Thank you.
Counselor McBride? Thank you. I'm certainly not an expert, but I'll just give you some background, my understanding. In 2000, I'm just reading some notes here. In 2017, the Connecticut Deep announced it was modifying its MS4 municipality requirements that they're going to need to take steps to protect water quality by preventing and reducing the impact to water bodies caused by stormwater. So they come out with these rules and regulations, and what they're saying is, they're moving forward, and you're going to be required to do certain permitting for stormwater. This is coming down, this is coming down the pike, it's going to lead to additional workloads for municipalities, which is going to lead to additional costs for municipalities. So what the, what the municipality did years ago was, they determined that we need, because of lack of funding, we're going to be operationally challenged, and we need to develop a long-term plan to how we're going to get the funding for the required improvements to get the permits, to maintain coastal resiliency, and so forth. With that being said, there were really two options. If we're going to need to get these additional funds, one option was the tax increase based upon the property values in the current system, or option B was to establish a stormwater authority based on the impervious covers of, of, of all property. So the key thing here was, it's not putting the extra money that's needed on the tax of only the, the residents through the property tax, it's putting it on all property owners and basing it on an impervious cover, which is a hard, you know, hard shell, like a pavement parking lot or anything that's really hard. It's not based on your property value. So as a result, it includes tax-exempt organizations, hospitals, colleges, and other areas as well. All users pay a fee based on the square footage of the impervious cover. To go into a little bit more detail, if you have a thousand-square-foot house or a thousand-square-foot area, the fee would come out to be $7.50 quarterly. That's what the municipality were, where I was involved with, assessed. If it was up to 2,000 square feet, it was a $15 quarterly fee, up to $3,022.50, and over that was $37.50. So that was a quarterly fee that was assessed. The funds, they're, they're recouping the funds in a different manner, and using those funds to purchase, for instance, a few years ago, we purchased three very large pumps down in the Bank Street area, too, which alleviated all the stormwater issues that we had there. So, long story short, it's a way to alleviate, to raise some funds, to settle some of the coastal resiliency issues that, that we've been talking a lot about here in Grotton for some time, and it's a way to do it without just directly impacting only property taxpayers. And again, I'm not an expert, that's just based upon my limited understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Parker?
My question, Mr. Mayor, so it still sounds like a tax to me. So on top of our regular taxes, we're going to have to have stormwater taxes for property owners, but what about the people that are tax exempt, that don't, they don't charge taxes for, which would be the Board of Ed, who has buildings, or colleges that don't pay taxes? The hospital, I, I, I'm not seeing, I'm seeing this as another tax on our residents that are already struggling right now. So right now, I, I want more information, and I want to see how it's going to affect our residents, as well as businesses, because coping has hit, and it's hit us hard the last couple of years, and we're still paying a price with uprising costs. I just found out tonight that families who are receiving SNAP benefits are minimums of $100. Food costs gone up. So do we really want to add something else on top of what we're already doing? So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Borlon?
I just had a quick clarifying question. You stated that it wouldn't affect hospitals and schools, right?
Excuse me, no, it will affect every organization in the town.
Okay. It would, okay. So as a person who's really about resiliency, John, was there any attempt to bring in the resiliency coordinator to look at this as well?
Yeah, this is really a new concept for all the staff. Before we can, we spend so many time on it, we want to get some direction on whether you want us to spend time on it.
Yeah, but one of my, one of my thoughts of the resiliency, bringing them on and funding that line item, was that they'd be here to help kind of direct us, because they're more educated in this than, say, I'll speak for myself, than myself on, on these things. So it'd be great to have them at times, we used to bring in staff that would discuss things for us. Is there any way that she could come?
This, this policy itself, I don't think would, I mean, she can weigh in, but there's going to be better, people are situated like Greg Hanover for the actual policy in terms of how it operates. This wouldn't necessarily fall under her purview so much.
So what I'm looking for is her knowledge on resiliency.
And she's very spread thin now, by the way, so we have to, basically, I need to know that it's something the council wants to do before I'd start having much staff time put towards it.
Right.
Because we all would have to get up to speed on it.
Right. It'd be great, though, I mean, I think when it's presented, it's great to bring the people around the table that know about it, and to hear from, like, Greg to say, yes, this is something he sees as a benefit. And it would be nice to have the resiliency person also state what this could do for us as an environmental aspect. That's why we brought on a resiliency person to guide us on these things. And so, there's a money attached to this, a cost, but it would be great to hear from our resiliency about that runoff and what that would mean for our town. So if there's any way to kind of coordinate that, I think that's, you know, part of the task at hand. With that, I...
Well...
Go ahead.
As I say, right now, they are not familiar with this at all. So, this is brand-new to them. So, again, and this is very, if you look into this, it's very complicated. This is going to be a long process, whatever happens. It's not going to be quick. So there'll be plenty of time, this is just an initial conversation, there'll be plenty of time to bring other people into it. I foresee a lot of meetings on this one.
Right, it's just like with the Board of Ed lapsing fund, it'd be great to have the pre-discussion here, just to, we can ping questions off them from the environmental side. But whatever, that's fine. I understand the tax costs, and I have to learn more about this, but I also see the benefit of looking at this from an environmental aspect, and it would be great to ping that off an environmental expert that we have on board of our team. I do think there needs to be more discussion on it as well, but I do think, you know, it brings to light, you know, the things that we're going to be looking at. I guess my other question for the town manager, at some point, this could be forced upon on the towns, is that correct? Or it's not an option?
Not an authority, but eventually, basically, what would end up happening is either the town will tax for these things that are needed, or else you'd have it, it'd be very similar to the sewer authority. You know, if you, you know, that they tax for what they need, or charge fees and a tax actually, for what they need, it'd be very similar. So basically, it's in the general fund budget that we tax for eventually, or it's in this, you know, under this authority. So, one way or another, obviously, two bodies might make, you know, different decisions on what you want to spend money on, but generally speaking, it's just where does the money come from?
So this is going to be coming, if we like it or not, is what you're saying?
Well, these requirements, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Okay. So it's not a matter of...
Well, there's the town, or there's an authority.
It's not a matter of now it's coming. If we don't do it now, this is going to be something that's going to be put on to us as a requirement by the state?
Well, to make it clear, not an authority, though, that's not a requirement, that's just an option on how you fund it. But yeah, there's going to be more and more requirements. We're seeing impact to climate change now with flooded roads, you know, there's going to be, there's definitely going to become more and more times where we have to spend money on things. So it's, does the town proper collect, spend the money on it, or does an authority do it, so?
And then my other question was, as we looked at, is there any grants still out there for anything for this?
Create an authority?
To help with the initial, like, startup.
I haven't seen anything, but I can check into it more.
Yeah, because that would be another thing that...
It's not out of the question. I mean, I could, we could definitely look into it.
Yeah, those are, these are all the questions I would have. That would be great, because that's another reason we brought on the resiliency and sustainability person, too, to help seek these funds and grants that we're going to pay for the position in a year, they stated. So, this would be another thing that we could look at to see where, and get some direction from them.
Thank you. Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I guess I echo a little bit about what Counselor Borland just said on the resiliency directive, but I'm just going to take it from a little different direction. In our packets, on page 112, we actually have a insert that came from the Yukon Stormwater and Climate Resiliency. And on page 112, it says, "How can municipalities establish a stormwater authority?", and there's an excellent set of questions here. So as I read through these questions this afternoon, I was thinking, these are the kind of questions that the resiliency person could probably answer or do a presentation on. So I think this is a good model. She could come and just sort of give us an overview of what this is. I'm not, I'm sort of learning stage on this. I know New London has done it, and there's definitely something's going to come, and it's just an organized way of doing it, whether it's an authority or it isn't. But I think this page just gives us a good checklist, and she could probably speak to many of these issues and just kind of educate us on what's important, what's not, what the town can do. You know, are there grants? I think the grant question's great, that is, one of her jobs was to find grants, but it kind of fits into this set of questions. And so I would just recommend using these questions, and she could come and give a presentation, and it helps educate us and moves us forward, and we kind of go from there, so.
I do think it's a little large, I think Greg would be very involved with these questions also, but...
Yeah, either one. I mean, I just, I think we have the people now.
And she's pretty spread thin and getting up speed, so just, you know, it might take a while before I can have her here.
Yeah, no, I think either person's fine, it just, it gives us a good, there's a good roadmap here. Once we went through these questions, we would kind of know a lot more, kind of focus us a little bit better, so, that's all.
Thank you, Counsel Casari.
Thank you. Mr. Burt, where does the jurisdiction of stormwater runoff lay now, and is there an existing authority that handles stormwater management?
I'd want to learn more, honestly, I'd want to talk more for Greg, see what role the sewer authority has, but there's a lot of things that town, that the, mostly it's public works doing the work. I mean, it's them cleaning drains out, it's them doing a variety of things. If there's, like, you look at Casino Road, if you remember, the town council approved a CIP for having engineering done on that flooding issue. So now it's really public works and using general fund dollars.
Okay, thank you. Do we have adequate town staff to participate in yet another meeting?
I mean, we'd have to see where it goes. We could certainly do some preliminary, you know, looking through these questions, and we could certainly have more discussion on it.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'll ask my next question through you to the referral maker. What would the new board look like? Because on page 71 in our packet in the Public Act, it states, "If a new board or commission is created, such municipality shall by ordinance determine the number of members thereof, their compensation if any, whether such member shall be elected or appointed, the method of their appointment if appointed, and removal, and their terms of office which shall be so arranged that not more than one-half of such term shall expire within any one year." So just curious if the referral maker had any idea what he wanted to do with that.
Excuse me, that would be up to the council to determine how that board would operate, similar to how it determines how other boards operate in the town.
Thank you. And my next question is, what would the overall cost to the taxpayer be? And I'm looking at page 111, and it says, "The most common means of implementing a stormwater fee is with a charge assessed by calculating the area of impervious surface on a property such as rooftops, sidewalks, driveways, parking, or other pavement." So, Mr. Burt, do you have any idea what the overall cost of the taxpayer would be?
No idea at this point. And I wouldn't be surprised if, you know, probably a lot of this work will have to be contracted out to determine, you know, some of these things.
Right, thank you. Do we have staff to handle fee collection and a billing system?
I think I'd have to know more information about it, honestly. You know, determining the area of coverage would be, you know, my most pressing issue upfront, because I don't, you know, like I said, I don't think staff could take that on themselves, that would have to be contracted out.
Thank you. My next question is in regards to page 74 in subsection D. It says, "Any person aggrieved by the action of a stormwater authority under this section shall have the same rights and remedies for appeal and relief as are provided in the general statutes for taxpayers claiming to be aggrieved by the doings of the assessors or Board of Assessment of Appeals." Mr. Burt, who would hear the appeal on this topic?
I'd want to check, you know, it might be the Board of Appeals, but I'm not sure. I would definitely want to talk to an attorney on that.
Great, thank you. My next question is in regards to page 78, where it says, "Section 5, Subsection A, such board shall have authority within the limits of appropriations from time to time made by the municipality or municipalities as applicable to plan, layout, acquire, construct, reconstruct, repair, maintain, supervise, operate, and manage a flood or prevention climate resilience and erosion control system." Who would actually implement this, Mr. Burt?
I'm looking at it, give me one sec here.
It's on page 78.
Yeah, yeah, I'm looking at it. You know, it really depends on how far they go with it. Like I said, they're doing some stuff themselves, but I could foresee, you know, some things might transition on how they're doing things, that, you know, could end up being, you need more staff. It's just, until you really get into it and determine, you know, it's really hard to know this early on.
Right, thank you. So, as we can tell, there's a lot of questions. And not only am I concerned about this affecting the homeowners, but also, I'm concerned about these fees affecting renters, because this could potentially get put on renters. And on page, I'll save my next line for my next round, thank you.
Counsel Baumgartner?
Yes, thank you. Just want to thank Counselor McBride for putting forth this referral. I know in recent years, I think the topic of the night is comparing Groton to New London. I know in years past, prior to this legislative change, New London had not qualified to, as a municipality that could have a stormwater authority, because the population was below 30,000. So that was a change that enabled New London to participate in the program, and as was mentioned, they have, and has been successful. It's my understanding that it has contributed to paying for much-needed infrastructure improvements with respect to MS4 compliance, as Counselor McBride stated. As we've heard in our ARPA discussions, past CIP discussions, there are no shortage of infrastructure projects in Groton that are worthy of funding, and certainly, if we could get them all funded at the state level, even better, but that certainly isn't the nature of the beast. So, this would enable the creation of a fund as well for, with respect to resiliency and climate adaptation. As was mentioned, I believe, by Counsel Jones, I believe to date, we still haven't had our resilience and sustainability manager present to the public. I went to one of her presentations at the library last week regarding pollinator pathways, and she was, really gave a really wonderful talk, and I think we're really lucky to have her. So it'd be great to hear what some of her priorities are and her thoughts on the possibility of implementing such a bold policy proposal here in town. But, just a question for Manager Burt, who should be kind of in the room as far as discussing what implementing a stormwater authority would look like? I would imagine Department of Public Works, the Finance Department, Planning Department, are there any other folks we should have at the table? Are you muted, Manager Burt?
He's actually not muted. I think your, I think your audio's switched, because you're not even muted. Manager Burt, I think your audio's switched from... From your laptop to some other source. I saw a message go across the screen, but I couldn't quite read what it said. Okay.
Can you hear us now?
Can you hear, can we hear him? No, we can't hear him.
John, speak.
Oh, he can't speak.
Guess it's an early night for John. Oh, no. Maybe if we ask Juliette, if she can hear us, we would know if it's on our end.
I don't think we can hear her either, because she was unmuted trying to speak.
There's two chats in there now.
Sean, just open up the chat and see what's inside of there.
Oh, she says both of them are speaking.
Yeah, they can hear us, we just can't hear them. All right, I think we should just move to recess, and...
No, it's fine. I think we can...
Well, I haven't spoken, and I have questions, so...
Right.
This is way above my pay grade.
What happened was the planning department was using anger speakers, too, and they plugged them in and turned on, and it hooked up Bluetooth. So, that's the problem.
So is the other meeting?
Yeah, the other meeting's not, but they put their speakers playing, they put them on charge, they started up again, and they connected by Bluetooth, they turned back on.
So it superseded it?
Was that P and Z?
Yeah. We're going to leave the meeting, I'm going to come back in.
John, can you hear us now?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yeah, the meeting's here, yeah.
Very good.
Hello?
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 No worries?
Thank you, Sean.
Counsel Baumgartner, would you restate your question?
Yes, Manager Burt, can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes, my question was, what agencies or departments need to be at the table as far as what would be needed to implement this proposal? So, I'd imagine...
I think that, you know, first internally, the, you know, we would want to do a little research ourselves with Public Works Planning, and maybe some others, but what we'd probably do is take a look at what else is out there, and then we'd get a base, like, template, done with working with other attorneys, and then we could all come together and start to fill it, you know, kind of, yeah, I think we need a base to start with.
And can you speak to the applicability, if it were to be implemented at a townwide level? Would the subdivisions, including Groton City and Groton Long Point, be exempt?
I don't think they're exempt from the sewer, as far as I know. It'd probably be somewhere... It'd probably be similar to that. Obviously, this is a, you know, question for our attorneys, but I suspect, well, I hate to speak, I'd like to look at that a little more.
Okay, all right. And just out of curiosity, what are your thoughts on the proposal?
Um, I, I, obviously, it's going to be a lot of work, but I have no issues with it. You know, I can say it a couple of different ways, you know, and it's a way to flag separately, you know, what's being spent, you know, to combat, you know, to help with resilience issues, so that's, it's a big positive. I definitely think it's worth looking into.
Are, are there any property taxpayers, like, case in point, at our last ARPA meeting, we dealt with the issue with respect to the, the way discharge in our stormwater, in our, actually, quite frankly, our sewers, and, and how that's a negative impact on the infrastructure? Are there any property taxpayers, and we don't have to mention names here, but that kind of disproportionately contribute to the cost of managing stormwater compared to other property users? I know in New London, for example, that was always the hospital-
Right.
-as a cited example, but do you have one?
Sure. I mean, there's obviously, you know, uses that create a lot more runoff, certainly. In terms of what we actually manage in clearing out drain, you know, I, I don't know if there's a particular impact on individual drains that we manage. I'd have to talk to Greg more on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Franco?
Thanks. So I, so we're not sure if this would affect Groton City or Groton Long Point and those areas such as those, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'd want to double check. I, I hate to, you know, speak and be wrong.
And then, I, I would also like to say that I was under the impression when we hired the Director for Resiliency that, and this was the big sell, and this is what I, why I was on board with hiring this position, was that they will get us millions and millions of dollars in grants to help with resiliency in our community. And so that's where I would like to go and try there before we go with some kind of stormwater, you know, implementing this whole thing, because, I mean, I can remember back in the day when, like, sewer tax used to only be like $37.50 a quarter, and it is quite drastically higher than that now. And I can see that it might start off like this, and it might not seem too, too bad, but over time, this is going to go up. And with being a, a state that is one of the highest taxed states in the whole country, I personally don't think, just because we can make more money on something, that we should actually do it, because you're just taxing people more and more. And I mean, we've had it come to us where we can put a tax if you sell your house, we can put a, you know, a conveyance tax on there and get more money from you, and I wasn't in favor of that. And now here we're doing this, and I understand it's for resiliency, but I'm more on, what was sold to me was, they will get us millions and millions of dollars in grants, and that's what I'm looking for, to help combat some of these issues. And I, and when it comes to like, and, and New London keeps being brought up tonight, again, I will say, New London has a mill rate of 42, ours is 24. They have, well, from what I've understood and what I've read in the papers, they have a lot of non-taxable property. So for them, this is probably a way for them to start contributing into their, you know, into their tax base, I guess, or how they can raise more money, because they are constantly talking about non-taxable entities. But with so many things that are in here, and, you know, penalties that can be put on people, or that if they do something with their stormwater and purify it, or have a little filtration plan, I guess, of some sort of their own, then they would get credits. I mean, there's like all this stuff, and I'm like, I'm, I'm, so if you have money, you can get credits and do better, but if you're, you know, average Joe citizen who lives in maybe Quonic Bridge, I mean, maybe you can't afford. I'll wait now until my next turn.
Thank you. Counselor Borland.
Again, I don't know where this would be as far as a tax liability or not, really. I think it's something, any great idea that comes forward doesn't mean it's going to be implemented, but I think it's, it's our due diligence to investigate if the options are out there as a municipality. The tax thing and all that comes after the fact. I can agree, though, I do, and I will send a referral, and since we had a new rules passed, we have to get, I think, how many counselors, four or five, to approve it, or is it three or two others, I don't know, I'll have to read the new rule. But I would recommend that our resiliency coordinator come before our council and, and give us a presentation, which we've yet to have, so, and we could ask questions about that. But I do ask the town manager that she does come forward, if you'd like me to do that as a referral, I will. I think, you know, we, we had her here, and we haven't had any engagement from this level, this level. So, but with that, just because something comes along doesn't make it bad. Unfortunately, there is a tax, I think eventually this is going to be the way. We, other towns do have this in, in place, and I don't think it's a comparison of New London, I can understand that their mill rate's higher, they also have different concerns that we don't have. One of the beautiful things about New London is they have a homeless and hospitality center, they have a soup kitchen, anyone that gets homeless over here from our taxes go over there, and they pick it up on their mill rate. So I'm thankful for our municipality of New London for all that they do, because they take our homeless and hungry. So with that, it's not a great comparison, I do think that there is more research to be done, and I think this is not something that Counselor, I can't speak for the Counselor, but I would assume that Counselor McBride didn't say this is something that was going to be enacted, it's just something to be researched and looked at how it could possibly fit in our municipality. And that's, that's what we're, we're tasked to do as counselors, to bring ideas forward that come from the state or in the town or local government, that are great ideas that look good, and we look to search and research how one could fit into our municipality. Unfortunately, tonight, just like my recommendation, nobody was here to ping questions off, so I don't want to say it was a waste of time, but I feel like it, it, it's just an agenda item kind of sinkhole that sits here. So I encourage when agenda items are placed on here, that we bring forth the people so we can ask the appropriate questions. So I could agree to move this forward in, I think it, it serves us justice to research it as a municipality. We, we made an agreement to make ourselves more resilient and more sustainable, and we should be seeking that, and we'll worry about the cost after if we decide to implement it, but it doesn't hurt to start looking at it. It is something that is coming down the pipe, there may be some grants out there where, you know, there's help to get this started, and it wouldn't be much cost at all. We don't know until we look. And so, again, I thank Counselor McBride for his due diligence, bringing this forward, and thinking in a resiliency, resilient and sustainable way, because we are a coastal community, and we have to think like that. If we're going to live here, we have to sustain it, or we won't have a community if we leave it to, you know, make, you know, if we leave it without preserving it. So I'm not saying for the tax, but I'm, I'm for the research to see what this is. Thank you.
Just, just one idea to throw out is the resilience coordinator staff to the resilience committee, and, you know, we could ask them to weigh, you know, to do a little research and see what they think of this, and as part of that, because this could take some research, you know, it's not like I could have her come next week and, and go over this, it's going to take some research, and she could work with that committee on it, and then come and give a presentation, just an idea.
Thank you. Counselor Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Counselor Franco actually brought up one of the points that I was going to make, that I couldn't make in my first round. On page 72, it talks about an establishment fees for property in its district, the stormwater authority shall offer partial fee reduction in the form of a credit for any property owner in its district who is installed and is operating and maintaining current stormwater best management practices that reduce, retain, or treat stormwater on-site, and that are approved by the stormwater authority. My biggest concern with many of this is that, again, we're disproportionately affecting people who are already struggling, and whether it's property owners or renters who end up incurring the fees from the, the property owners, I'm just concerned that ultimately this is going to, you know, people that can't afford to remedy those issues are ultimately going to pay more. So Mr. Burt, has there been any attempt at an educational program on stormwater management up until this point?
Not at all.
Rather than going to the next extreme, extreme and going to, you know, another fee, I would almost be more in favor of doing a, a townwide educational program, or maybe the Resiliency and Sustainability Manager puts together a presentation and does it at the library, like Counselor Baumgartner said that he attended something, or a social media campaign to educate members of our community how they can reduce pollutants from runoff, rather than go to that, that next step. That would almost be something that I would be much more in favor of going to as a next step, rather than jumping into something that, obviously, I have many questions, and I'm just not comfortable going forward until there's, a lot of those questions are answered. So I, I don't know if that's something that others are in favor of, or something that the Resiliency and Sustainability Manager can look into, but that's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Franco?
Thank you. And so I, I just think you're putting things on to people that are struggling as it is, and, and I just don't understand, like, if you're already being taxed for sewers, basically, which takes care of stormwater, because that's what it is, why are we being taxed, why would you want to put another tax on, on people again for, you know, for this? I, I just don't understand it, and just because we can doesn't always mean we should. And so I would like to also now understand fully what the sewer fees that we pay to our town of Groton, what those cover, and how those work in conjunction with us. And I'd like to know, because there are sort of penalties as well, so if I have a driveway in my, on my property, I'm going to be taxed on that, because that's going to be considered square footage, as well as my house, as well as if I had a patio in my backyard, that's all square footage that is, you know, that would be taxed in this and considered square footage. So we'd also have to have, I guess, GIS systems in place to do, I guess, overhead, and we'd have to have people go around when they do the audits and check people's backyards to see if they have a patio under a tree and you can't see it by GIS. I mean, these are like things that is going to be taxed. And what happens if I have like a small oil slick in my driveway? Will I be penalized for that? Would that, would that create an issue with my stormwater coming from my property into the drains that would be a penalty for me? And who would implement that? And would they issue tickets? I mean, there's a lot here that I'm just not exactly sure. And me personally, I am all for resiliency, sustainability, and that's why we hired somebody, and let's try and get those grants, because I haven't really heard of any grants coming from the person yet, and granted, they're sort of new, but I think that's the route we should try and take first, than just putting another fee on our residents, because I, I, I do hear a lot about how much taxes they pay, and they don't want to be taxed anymore, especially with people who have fixed incomes. And, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, if, I don't know if we're doing consensus or anything, but I would be in, in favor of just getting more education from our new resiliency director, based on either the questions in the back, or just something that just educates us a little bit more about what some of the problems are, how do communities deal with them, where can we go, whether we did this or we didn't, didn't do, formed a stormwater authority or not, but just sort of the general, just educate us a little bit. I like Counselor Casiri's comment about some of that information we put out through social media. I think that's a great idea, just to kind of educate people, and these are things you can do, you know, on your own driveway, on your own patio, on your gutters, roof, all those kinds of things that, that collect water. So that might be a nice part of her job, to kind of just educate us, but I think just the general education on all of this, I think, could be very helpful, and we can always decide if we move forward after that, but just, you know, I don't know very much on it, and it's, you know, just that list of questions is a great list of questions, and just, just do a presentation on what all this really means, where the community's going, where she thinks that thing is going. I've watched her, I also agree that she's very good, I watched her presentation in Mystic on Water, I went to that presentation, and she did a great job, so she's, she speaks really well, and is very, very smart and informative on these issues, so I think I'd just like to hear her, just educate me on what does this mean, what do these words mean, and what can be done, and then, you know, what can be done sort of at a, a low level, and then we can always take it from there, so.
Thank you. Counselor Baumgartner?
Manager Burt, are you still there?
Yes.
Yes, so now the fee, the stormwater user fee, it, it's not based off of property, the, it's not based off of property tax, per se, it's based off of-
Impervious surfaces.
-the pervious surfaces.
Yeah.
So if, for example, you're a property taxpayer that has a lot of pervious surface, hypothetically, you would pay more towards this, towards this fund than a taxpayer that does, you know, obviously has very little.
Right.
Yes.
True, yeah.
Yes. So, and from some of my research, there are three municipalities, obviously New London being the closest, but New Haven and Orwok that have implemented it. The only municipality to implement the proposal after the Governor's Climate Bill, which was caught, included in that, the, the MS4 provisions, plus the Stormwater Authority expansion, was included in that bill, so that was the first municipality that participated since that change. But currently, where do we, the town, get its revenue to pay for MS4 upgrades, whether it be capital projects or operating expenses?
Well, ultimately, it's general fund, yeah.
So currently, we're using property tax dollars to pay for them. So this, and I, I, I hear folks using the term tax, I, I don't know if we can call it a tax, because it's a fee that would pay towards something that does, already, there's a cost associated with it, so it's, there's costs associated with MS4, it's mandated by our state that we have to comply with the standards of, to ensure that we are, that, you know, we're protecting our, our water quality and not discharging any water that is polluted into our sound, but we need to identify funding sources to be able to pay for these upgrades in the future, and yes, it's so critical that we seek every possible grant there is, but the reality is, not, not every grant will, that we receive will pay for these improvements. So this would identify a funding stream to pay for many of these critical projects in the future, to pay for, you know, green and gray stormwater infrastructure. So I will be very much supporting this proposal, I, I hope there is a consensus to continue doing our research, but I, I think we need to be bold and, and, and do this. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Parker?
It's a fee on top of what we already have as taxes per, per each person with, on their property, correct? So we're already being taxed on something, you want to, it's like a assessment fee, I'm going to say it that way. So on top of already paying taxes, this is going to be an additional assessment fee on the properties we currently have. Can I say it that way?
I think that's fair.
That is going to happen every year?
Yeah, that, yeah, it would be every year.
On top of our regular taxes that go up every year? So would the fees go up every year too, or is it going to be just a flat rate?
Well, you know, you look at stormwater, like at the sewer authority, you know, they've held things flat some years, they've increased some years, you know, it's all up to what the authority's needs are, and, you know, and to set that rate.
So, wouldn't this be under the sewer authority anyways, or does it have to be separate? Don't they take care of this stuff?
No, not really. It would be, right now, it's under the Public Works, it's not really under the sewer authority. I mean, obviously, these things interplay with one another.
Okay, my other question will be, is that's going to be moved out of the budget under Public Works then? Because then if that's the case, then some of this, what they're doing is not going to be under them, is it? Or is it still going to be under them on top of what the authority's going to set for a fee?
Just like any ordinance, you look at our, our attempts for a short-term rental, there's a lot of options in these things, and, you know, until you really go through it, you can't really, you know, you can craft these things- it, you can't really, you know, you can craft these things to what you need. What I'm hearing tonight, though, I mean, there's a whole lot of questions tonight, but I, I don't think any ideas should be dismissed out of hand, I think it is the right move to maybe break, have Megan and, and probably Greg do some research and present-
And the finance department, and the finance department, please, because it's gonna affect people's property.
Yeah, certainly, yeah.
And let them figure out and come up with some monitors, because that's, it's not gonna be fair to them to throw something else upon them. As previously stated, there are fixed incomes for some people, and there's a rising cost of everything already, so do we really wanna throw a assessment, I'm gonna call it an assessment fee, to make it easier, assessment fee every year for families? And does this include people who live in condo associations, in Brannford Manor, in, any type of apartment housing, as has been previously stated? It's gonna be the landlord adding an additional cost, and it's rising already. We gotta look at what's happening now with people not able to afford their homes, or anything like that. So can we just look at every little bit before we say yes to something? Thank you.
I, I like Counselor Jones' suggestion of those questions on 112, pick 112, but expand it to include having like finance talk about how they do their fee collection, Greg talking about what the sewer authority does. I think this could be, you know, regardless of what, how you pay for anything, these are all just good information to have out for the public, and I think it'd be worth having that discussion, or that, that information for everybody.
And this wouldn't be implemented if we did it, and, which is both things, the aft, way after budget season's gonna take us a little time to-
Oh, this is gonna take a while, yeah, yeah. I think just, you know, like I said, all these questions are stuff that we should all know, learn about anyways, so I think it's good to have, you know, to bring, to go ahead and schedule this discussion as soon as we can.
Thank you. Counsel McBride?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanna be clear that I'm not a fan of raising taxes, but I am a fan of this council looking into things strategically over the long term to make better decisions for Groton, and I think that's why I brought this referral up, was really for us to review. This is just an initial discussion, I had no way thought, I mean, this is years of, years of work to implement something like this, so it was just to see if this council wanted to move forward with that direction, because I think we all can agree, costs for coastal resiliency and climate change and stormwater are going to increase dramatically in the future, so I think if we can at least get ahead of it, it will help us out down the road. And I also, you know, there's costs that we're incurring through the general fund for some of these things out now, so it's not a matter of increasing new fees, I think it's, I think it's the way to look at it, is you are shifting some of the costs that we currently pay in the general fund and to the residents, you're shifting that to all users who, who, you know, you're making it much more equitable for the users of the, the surfaces that are causing the runoff, you're, you're making sure everybody's held accountable to generate revenues to pay for these future costs. So again, it's just a initial thought, it's gonna take a lot of work, it was just something I thought we should consider going down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Manager Burt, by my count, we don't have a consensus to create a draft policy, but it seems we have consensus, just to get some more information.
Okay, we'll get working on that.
Okay, thank you. That should be the end of our agenda, so.
I'd like to make-
There's no second.
I would just like to let everybody know that this Friday I have FOI hearing at the State of Connecticut, and I would like to also make a referral, as Counsel, Counselor Cassari had, and have that brought to the council, so, by our attorneys, so they can give us an update after there's a result from it. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Moved by Cassari, seconded by Baumgartner. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, suspensions, we are adjourned unanimously at 9:50.